Good evening and welcome to the Norwood School Committee meeting of Wednesday, January 23rd. Could you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first order of business is approval of the minutes from our January 16th meeting. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Maura. Is there a second? Thank you, Teresa. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll put it to a vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Correspondence. Dr. Thompson, do we have correspondence?
Yes, we do. We have a very nice letter from Lee Kennedy from the Norwood Circle of Hope. And it reads, Dear Dr. Thompson, the Norwood Circle of Hope Foundation has held its annual Luminary Night on December 7th. We're very fortunate to have the following students of Norwood High School volunteer to help us get things started and to help clean up at the end. They were great. We thoroughly enjoyed them. This is a list of those who were there. We wanted you to know what a wonderful group they were and how much help they gave us. We could not have done all this without them. And she lists the participants Jacob Bodenhoffer, Daniel and Joseph DiBassi, Brian Connolly, Tim Deloria, Jake Manning, Dan Gruber, Jonathan Demarias, Tyler Barrett, Ethan Barrows, Sean Quinn, Tim Grenham, Connor Walsh, Steve Riccardi, and Mr. Robert Follen and Mr. Chris Follen. I hope I've spelled their name correctly. I hope I've pronounced them all correctly. Thank you for allowing us to distribute the applications to the school as well. Sincerely, Lee Kennedy.
Thank you very much. I want to remind the committee, we do have warrants to sign this evening. Since it's only been one week since our last meeting, there aren't that many. We have one payroll warrant in the amount of $1,387,430.38. One Buildings and Grounds warrant in the amount of $13,126.46. Two accounts payable warrants, one for $224,723.57 and one for $165,853.47, for a grand total of $1,791,133.88. So I'll ask the committee to sign at your convenience. At this time, it's, public forum is next on our agenda, so at this time, we invite members of the public to come before us to speak about things that are under the purview of the school committee. And we ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak at public forum? Want to come forward? And do we want to have them?
There isn't a mic there.
Come here? Okay.
Yeah.
If you could start by stating your name and address, please.
Katie Neil Rizzo, 40 Prospect Avenue.
Thank you.
I wrote this while I was making dinner, bathing a child, trying to get ready for the coffee with the superintendent, so bear with me. My name is Katie Neil Rizzo. I'm the co-president of the Oldham Elementary School PTO. I'm a mother of three children, grades three and one here at Oldham, and a preschooler. I'm also a town meeting member for District 2. I want to start off by thanking you, the members of the school committee and Dr. Thompson for everything that you do for our district. The amount of time and energy you put into fighting for the best for our students does not go unnoticed. And even if I don't necessarily agree with everything that you all do, I do appreciate your time. I'm speaking tonight in a call to action for parents, grandparents, and residents of this town. We are at a breaking point. We are in need of an override to fix the yearly budget deficit and funding issues continuing to plague our schools and general government. Norwood is one of the last 30 some odd towns and cities in Massachusetts who has yet to do a propositional two and a half override, operational override. We are behind. Every year we avoid doing an override, our problem gets bigger. This is not a matter of choosing one or another. We shouldn't have to decide arts or sports, closing one school or another, cutting teachers or programs, or seniors or young people. There is a solution available to help everyone, and that is a property tax increase in the form of a prop two and a half override. We need to stand up for our most vulnerable populations, children, seniors, and those low income. We do not have to protect one group in spite of another. We can raise taxes to help fund our general government and schools while making information about tax exemptions for seniors more readily available. We just need action. We cannot kick this can any further down the road. Parents, grandparents, residents, this is a call to action for you. Take a minute to email the members of the Board of Select People, the school committee, the Finance Commission. Tell them what you want for the future of our town. It takes one minute to send an email, but it will make a world of difference. Pay attention to the newspapers, televised meetings on Norwood Community Media, replays of meetings you missed on demand on the NCM website. Ask questions, get informed, and stay informed. Pay attention to what the elected officials are not only saying, but also doing. Get out to the polls, not only if and when a prop two and a half override goes on the ballot, but also on April 1st. Vote for people who represent and stand for what you want for your kids and your town. This is our future on the line.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at public forum? Again, I'll ask you to state your name and address.
Hey. Ed Ferris, 35 McKinley Road. I'm also a town meeting member. I've been before multiple versions of this board multiple times. I just wanted to say that, you know, we've gone through a lot of years of me and other people like me coming up to this board because this is one of the only places where everybody has a voice. So, yes, I am using you this evening, and I'm not shy to say that. But I'm using you for a good cause. Because I grew up in this town, I left this town, I came back to this town because I thought it was a good place to come back to. But over the past, honestly, 15 years now, I have been having a harder and harder time justifying my choices because we seem to be, I don't have the right word for it. I want to say ignoring, but ignoring is too harsh because it's more subtle than that. We seem to be getting caught up in the difference between school and town. The difference between what we need to have and what we want to have. The differences between, you know, what is really justified and what is absolutely required. And by absolutely required, I mean all the unfunded mandates that we have to deal with, which frankly, most people don't understand. They don't know. They really don't get. I don't even get because it's incredibly complex. But I wanted to remind everybody about just the basic formula. I mean, Norwood has been very, very lucky. The town was planned, when it was first built, to have a significant amount of commercial real estate, primarily to offset the cost of the residents, so residential real estate would not have heavy tax burden on it. Well, that's great. You know, great planning. And it's proved itself time and time again. It was a great plan. But, you know, everything wears over years. And in the 70s, when Prop 2.5 was passed, Prop 2.5 was passed, let's remember, primarily because taxes were getting completely out of control. I mean, taxes were being applied to everything under the sun. And tax rates were going up far faster than the rate of inflation for no good reason. So the obvious kickback reaction was, well, stop it. Well, we stopped it. But I want to also remind people that 2.5% was an arbitrary number that was pulled out by a political committee. It didn't actually have any meaningful reason for being used. Okay? And that's very important because 2.5% is all we're allowed to increase our rates by if a town chooses to do that, which we should mention, the town of Norwood did not. For many, many years, we did not increase by 2.5%. For most of the 2000s, a significant portion of the early 2010s, we weren't increasing by 2.5%. It was actually a community group that brought it to town meeting, that got to town to finally say, yes, we need to increase our rates by the full 2.5% that we're allowed to do. Okay? That being said, the rate of inflation averages 3% if not more every year. Everybody should be able to do the math. If you start with 2.5, but you're growing by 3, that means the value of every dollar you have decreases by half a percent every single year. We have a deficit. It's a townwide deficit. It's not just at school deficit, and it needs to be fixed. And we've been cutting for years, and you can't say we haven't. And everybody says there's more money to be found, and everybody says that, you know, oh, they always find money. It's not that simple. And everybody needs to remember that. So think about the future. Think about the fact that we're one of the last towns to ever get an override. That's a blatant statement of damn good management, and nobody can argue that. Think about the fact that, yeah, well, we're finally going to do it, but you know something? Even when we do it, we're still going to be cheaper than every other town around here as far as property taxes are concerned, and that is a fact. So it's common sense, and thank you for letting me use you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at public forum? All right. Seeing none, I'll declare public forum closed. Announcements, Dr. Thompson, do we have any announcements today?
Not at this time. I will cover a few in my superintendent's report.
Okay. Then we have appearances, and the first one is Dr. Manaday. And I want to thank you for hosting us here at the Oldham School. And Dr. Manaday is going to come up and join us.
Where do I put the microphone?
Did you want to speak from there or from here?
If he speaks from there, the TV won't pick him up.
But if, you just need to speak so that that microphone can hear you. If you would prefer to stand and face the crowd, I think you can do that as long as you're...
I'll sit here.
Okay.
I'll sit in the hot seat.
Okay.
No, it's not too hot. Welcome, school committee, Dr. Thompson, Dr. Wyatt, and parents, family, and community members, teachers, and staff members also. We're happy to have you here at the Oldham School. The school is a busy place. In addition to the core curriculum, we constantly strive to extend student learning and expose our students to many educational opportunities. Let me give you a few examples. The Oldham School Library has been finishing a unit on robotics and computer coding, Spiro's, Ozos, and B-bots. And the last time the school committee meeting was held, we had a demonstration of the Ozos here. Thanks to the PTO and the PPG grants, we have some new maker space materials and have been working on STEM initiatives that are aligned with literacy. Students have been working cooperatively in groups and have been sharing ideas on how to problem solve. We have built marble runs, snapped together circuits, and had origami jumping frog competitions. Very, very interesting. Our Norwood Young Readers Awards, NIRA program is nearing completion, and our grades five and four students will be voting soon on their favorite book. And if you came in through the front, there's a bulletin board right outside the library, and that's where all the votes are being casted. So thank you to the Norwood Masons for their support also in this program. In the library, our grade two students will be starting a research unit on penguins. And this past week, I thought that there were going to be some penguins coming up the driveway. So working with their classroom teachers, these students will be creating slideshows after doing much research and highlight specific breeds of penguins. The Oldham Library continues to do work every day to share a love for literature and being a valuable resource for students and teachers. Thank you to our library teachers, Mrs. Donna Miller and Erin Ruland. Our grade one teachers will be celebrating the 100th day of school with some fun activities they've organized for our whole school to collect 100 canned goods per grade for the Norwood Food Pantry. Thank you to Stephanie Andrews, Mrs. Jackie Ignichuk, and Mrs. Gina Stevens. A Rainforest Cafe, a luncheon with invited parents and family members as a culminating activity for their guided research project will take place in the second grade. The students will create books and will have the opportunity to present their research at this cafe. And thank you to Mrs. Caroline Havlin and Mrs. Leah Wasserman, our second grade teachers. A Living Wax Museum presentation will be presented by grade three. Students will be, will do guided research on a famous figure of history. Their research studies culminate with them dressing as that person and presenting their research in full presentation. Parents, family members, including siblings, teachers, and staff are invited. And you should be here for that. We're going to invite all of you to this very wonderful Living Wax Museum presentation. Thank you to Mrs. Karen Manning and Mrs. Carrie Pritchard, who are our third grade teachers. Our fourth grade students will have a state fair. Students will research a state. And I always look for the person or the student who gets the state of Hawaii because they get to interview me for their research. Then the students will present their research with a full display, including posters and items native to the state. They will have research. All parents, family members, teachers, staff, students, school administrators, and community members are invited to attend. And thank you to Caitlin Lang and Ms. Megan Shil, who are our fourth grade teachers. Our fifth grade students will have an explorers project where the students will create a slideshow. I think we had a presentation, part of it last year when you were here, we had a slideshow, and that was part of it. The research work will be done in cooperative groups, and the culminating event will be students doing oral presentations to their teachers and classmates. And thank you to Mrs. Scott Maffey, Mrs. Steve Perry, and Mrs. Debbie Shook, our fifth grade teachers. The entire school, we will be reading the How to Steal a Dog in the One Book, One School Literature Initiative, where the entire school reads the same book. Additionally, the classes will be able to Skype with author Barbara O'Connor, who wrote the book. So all classes will be participating in Read Across America activities in the month of March. The activities are being organized by Ms. Candace DeBoer, our literacy teacher specialist. She informed me that in honor of my last year at the Oldham School, the theme will be Hawaiian. That's going to be very interesting. She plans on having Hawaiian tropical decorations and use catchy phrases about reading and Hawaiian. Mahalo, or thank you, to Ms. DeBoer. We have been very fortunate to have Ms. Linda Murbach working as a volunteer here at the Oldham School for the last 12 years. She is a former reading specialist who worked in the clinical and school settings for 40 years, and now she works with some of our regular education students who don't qualify for extra support, but who could use a little boost with their reading and writing skills. So thank you very much to Ms. Murbach. The Research Room and Learning Center support the students in research and producing the written portions of the classroom projects. In the fall, the students had a fun learning activity of carving pumpkins. There's some really, really fun faces that were on those pumpkins folks. And they also learned about money and had in-class shopping experiences using supermarket coupons and buying sale items. So thank you to Mrs. Jody Smith and Mrs. Jen Damato, who are the Research Room and Learning Center teachers. The PACS Classroom is starting its second year of the peer program that seeks to build relationships between students in grades three to five and students who participate in the PACS Classroom. The program is being designed and run by the PACS Classroom Special Education Teacher, Mrs. Bertone, and School Adjustment Counselor, Mrs. Collins. This year, there are over 50 students participating. The students in grades three to five were selected as peer models to meet with students from the PACS Classroom once a week to engage in activities that foster social skills, communications, play skills, teamwork, and help build a community of acceptance and inclusion. All of the students are very excited to participate, and many students who participated last week have rejoined again for a second year. Thank you to Mrs. Lindsay Bertone and Mrs. Lisa Collins, who head up that program. The enrichment classes for our students were provided by the Oldham PTO. These classes run for, once a week after school, for six weeks. In the fall, the classes were in Storytime Theater, Fun with Food, a cooking class, I liked that, coding with kids, Zumba for kids, games galore, and having fun with fitness. In the spring, the classes that will be offered are Community Service, Origami, Running Club, Science Club, Scrapbooking, and Yoga. So thank you to Mrs. Katie Neil Rizzo for organizing that. And additionally, the PTO provided students with enrichment presentations by the New England Percussion Group, a production of Peter Pan. The whole school went to this production at the Norwood Theater. And recently, we had the Tanglewood Marinette. Thank you to Mrs. Rebecca Deeks for organizing all of those enrichment programs. And finally, the Oldham School thanks the PTO for the entire wonderful enrichment programs they provided for us here. Research has shown that the more enrichment we provide for students, the higher the achievement level is for them. And so thank you to the members of the Executive Board, Ms. Kat Hare, Ms. Katie Neil Rizzo, Ms. Jen Carey, Mrs. Yvonne Monahan, Mrs. Tricia O'Brien, Mrs. Samantha Bradley, and Mrs. Rebecca Deeks. Some of them are here with us tonight. And also, thank you to the parents who have served on committees that have enriched the learning here at the school. And then lastly, you know those refreshments that you see over there and that you've enjoyed? They were provided by our PTO. So thank you for, to the PTO for providing those. And lastly, aloha, and thank you for coming to the Oldham School tonight. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Manaday.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere just yet.
Questions?
Are there questions from the committee? Maura?
I just wanted to say thank you for hosting us and for everyone putting together such a, you know, wonderful spread with the PTOs and the teachers and for this wonderful report. And I just also want to take a second because I know this is your last year with us that you're retiring, and just to, on behalf of myself and I'm sure the rest of the committee, just to thank you for all of the hard work and years of service that you've given to not only the students in this school, but to all the students and faculty and staff of Norwood.
Thank you. There've been a wonderful dozen years, 12 years here at the Oldham School. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's it? Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Manaday.
Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is capital outlay request. So Mr. Kidd and Mr. Riccardi, if you could come up and join us.
Thank you. Joe and I bucked up, and I won, so I'm going first.
All right.
I just want to start out, and it actually leads into capital outlay. I just want to give a great shout out of thanks to our Buildings and Grounds crew and all of our custodians, who probably dealt with one of the toughest storms that we've had in a long time. And it's not the amount of snow, it was the conditions. And those guys were out there early Sunday morning and went through into Sunday night and then came back Monday and again on Tuesday morning. And just to put it in perspective, we went through a tractor trailer of salt and sand. That usually lasts us a month and a half, one storm. We went through five pallets of ice melt, and there are 50, 40-pound bags on each pallet. So it was, I know some people think, you know, it wasn't perfect, and I really believe that it was as good as we could do it, given the conditions. So I just want to give a shout out to them. That leads me into the capital outlay plan. Over the years, we've been able to, with your support and the town's support, replace our fleet of trucks that help us do all the snow removal and other things. And without that, we wouldn't have been able to handle this storm. The capital outlay plan that you have in front of you is basically, it's the same format that we've been using for the last 15 years, and it looks over five years. As you can see, this year coming up in FY '20, we are really just, and it's not we, Buildings and Grounds, we're not asking for anything this coming year. We're taking the summer and the year off with any kinds of capital projects. What I'm here tonight is representing Anne Marie Ellis and Al Bishop, who's the new Director of Transportation. And the only thing that we're asking for as far as wheels go is a new wheelchair van. They have three of them. One is always in reserve. The two are constantly out in the road, and the reserve is in case one goes down, they can keep the service. Well, one of the vans just died last week. It's got 157,000 miles on it. So we're, they are really in need of a new van. So that is the request coming from Buildings and Grounds slash Transportation is just for one van. And then you can see going forward, we would like to finish the floors in this school, that's in FY '21. And then depending on how this year ends up and the new year starts, this capital plan might be changed over time. And depending how the new junior high plan goes, this plan might be changed over time. So just trying to make it short and sweet, we are really just the one vehicle. That's what we need.
Okay.
To service our kids.
I was mentioning?
Yes.
A point, thank you, Mr. Riccardi, for coming and representing this. And I also just want to call one thing into question, or not into question, but just to point one thing out to keep us in mind as we move forward in terms of budget. We're consistently underfunding snow and ice, which is something that we're hoping to address with the override, but an entire month's worth of salt and ice melt.
Right. One storm.
Yeah, one storm. So it's just something to keep in mind as we start to think through that one-line item. I also just want to point out that I think it's prudent in this budget cycle to be going for the one van, but I do think it's important to point out the things that we aren't doing that we should, that are on this list. Oldham floor tile, finishing that, replacing severely deteriorated asbestos floor tile in the main hallway of classrooms, that's been pushed to FY '21. Willett classroom light replacement, so to replace lights and new efficiency lighting, which will save us money in the long term, that's been pushed to FY '21. Replacing doors and windows at the Willett as FY '21. Oldham and Balts replace four 21-year-old boilers, 21-year-old boilers, that's to FY '22. And security upgrades for all schools has also been pushed to FY '22. I think it's prudent to be going for the van, but I also think it's important to notice that all of these items are needed and are probably needed sooner than FY '22, and...
Yeah. Thank you for that. And just to follow up, when we had to build the town-wide, school-wide building study done, it was $44 million worth of work that needed to be done in the elementary schools to, A, bring them up to code, put in air conditioning, all other kinds of safety stuff. So there's a lot of need that's out there, and it's something that this town is going to have to grapple with and figure out what we do and how we do it. But again, the junior high schools tends to start that planning process.
Yes.
This is one other point I wanted to make, just because we don't always get the pleasure of seeing you. I wanted to...
I like it that way.
I know you do.
No offense.
But I do...
Yeah.
No, but part of what I wanted to say is it's under your leadership and your department and those wonderful custodians and Buildings and Grounds people that you just pointed out, that we've been able to keep our buildings in the wonderful shape that we are in, and I think that that's a real credit to the Buildings Department that we have in the schools. And I think it's something that we should, we should keep in mind, that it is a real asset to the school system.
I thank you, but, you know, I'm going to push it back. It's the guys.
Exactly.
It's the guys that do the work and take the pride and the ownership in these buildings.
All right. Any other questions? All right. I just wanted to point out one other thing, you know, another thing that we have talked about, there's a bunch of things that we've talked about, but one thing that we've talked about is the athletic facilities at the high school. And knowing that at some point in the future, we will need to resurface that track and replace the turf on the football field. And according to this five-year plan, those things will be pushed out to FY '25.
Right. Right. The field will last a good 10 years, you know, that 10 to 12 years. So we're still in the ballpark, and it's actually in pretty good shape. It's the track that's getting to show the wear and tear from the use. And we can do some repairs of that, but, you know, you've got to do both together. It makes no sense to do one and then come back with equipment and go over. It makes no sense to do one and then come back with equipment and go over either one to do the other, so.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Kidd, would you like to talk to us about technology?
Sure. Thank you very much. Thanks for having me. So, what I've given you is the next three years out with some very, you know, some specific numbers for next year. We're looking to replace about 10 network switches across six buildings in the district through this, for next year. One of the reasons why I put those in there is, we can still leverage E-rate funding for those. We get a 50% reimbursement back on that equipment. But this, it's what's called category-two funding. So, there's two categories of E-rate funding. Category-two is network infrastructure, wireless access points, which is things of that nature. Five years ago, category-two funding was pretty much guaranteed. Before five years ago, it wasn't, and it was very rare that you did get funded for category-two. So, five years ago, USAC, the body that runs E-rate, set a certain amount of money for each school, district, or actually each school is really, has a certain amount of lot of money that you can, you can use for those reasons. The five years is up next year. Next year's the last year that you can use that money. We still have money left that we can use. So, there's no guarantee after next year that they'll continue to fund category-two projects, and there's been no announcement as to whether they're going to or not. And there's really been no sort of clue that they, you know, whether it's going to be yes or no. So, I think that we should, these switches are all, you know, seven to 10 years old, seven to nine years old, which is a good time to start replacing them. We should take advantage of the 50% discount that we can, that we can get on that. And then, we always, every year, have replacement laptops for our teachers that we need to fund. These laptops, there's 81 of them, majority at the Coakley and some at the elementary schools. They're their teacher laptops that they use every day in classroom and at meetings and PD. They're going to be six years old next year. Some are starting to fail. We're starting to buy batteries for them, and it makes sense to move forward. And we're also on the refresh cycle for our administrative desktops, for principal secretaries in the Savage Administration Building. It's also important to note that, you know, we're basically mostly, as we start to upgrade computers, moving from Windows 7 to Windows 10, Windows 7 operating system goes end-of-life next January, which means you no longer get security updates for Windows 7. So, you know, any, any computers, teacher laptops and desktops that we have planned to refresh in the next couple of years, we should try and do as soon as possible, rather than purchasing a license to upgrade to Windows 10 and then the next year, replace, replace the machines. So, trying to be prudent in our ask. We got a pretty big capital project funded last year, so, but these are things that, as in the switch replacement, we end up saving money in the long run for the town, and same with the computer replacements as well. So, it's a total of $145,500 for FY '20. And then, I put in FY '21, FY '22 future projects that we need to fund, one being the, and I spoke a little bit about this last year as well, the NHS, the high school classroom technology, the projectors and the interactive boards that are there. The interactive boards that, that were purchased and installed when the high school was built are not, they're not made anymore. The company went out of business. So, any teacher that has an interactive pen, you can't find them anymore if they, if they break or anything like that. So, but there needs to be a plan in place as to what that next sort of, what that next classroom looks like at the high school. So, we'll be working on planning this spring and then testing out some solutions at the end of this year, next year, and come up with a better plan of what needs to be funded and what that looks like moving forward. And it could be, it could be as simple as just replacing the projectors themselves as teachers rely less and less on the interactivity on the boards, because students all have their own Chromebooks. It's, you know, less of a need, so, you know, there's some, some things to look at there. Also FY '21, we should look at refreshing the switches at the high school, and the high school will be 10 years old at that point. The E-rate money is not there. I would've, I would've put it in for next year, but the E-rate money's not there due to the Digital Connections Grant that we received last year. That relied a bit on the high school's E-rate money. So, we'll see what that looks like next year, what USAC decides for what the future of E-rate is, and there's a possibility that we might be able to leverage some of that for the high school. We just won't know until, until next, the next couple of years. I have in here for FY '21 and FY '22, one-to-one refreshes. However, I believe that we're trying to move that into the general budget. We have moved it into the general budget, so we can just take that, take that off.
Right. But yeah, I just want to make that clear to everyone, the, because we did start that one-to-one initiative with the Chromebooks, every year we will need to purchase, you know, this last year, we purchased Chromebooks for seven grades, which we will not have to do again. But every year, the plan would be that we would purchase Chromebooks for incoming sixth graders and incoming ninth graders. And then, we would reclaim the, the used Chromebooks from the, you know, the graduating eighth graders and the graduating seniors, and then those can be recycled down to...
Down to the elementaries.
Elementary. But that, that money is included in our current FY '20 operating budget as it stands right at the moment.
Okay, so we can take, take that out.
Yeah.
That's, so, that's basically it. FY '22, just looking out three years, more switch refreshes as we get through the rest of the district. We're going to have a wireless access point refresh that we're going to need to do in the elementary schools. And then, you know, depending on what happens with the middle school project, there'll be some, you know, we might be able to reclaim some equipment there and not have to, not have to go out to capital for the Coakley Middle School after FY '22.
Any questions for Mr. Kidd? Thank you so much for, and especially for keeping us up to, you know, what's going on with all the different programs that we can take advantage of to save money and get more of our money.
I didn't have Mr. Kidd's report in my packet, if I could just get a copy of that.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, mine.
I'll pass one down to you. Michelle?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Joe, for all your incredibly phenomenal work that you do.
Thank you.
You and your staff, thank you for taking care of our kids so well.
Thank you, the staff.
So, I always have to get the last word.
I'm, I still have something to do. Yeah, okay.
I just want to, I've been in this business for over 40-something years, and I always have the good luck of coming here with Joe. And, you know, Joe's users are up to over 4,000 users, and I've never seen an IT department, central IT department, that has three people and they're servicing over 4,000 users. And by and large, it doesn't miss a beat. So, it is a credit to this gentleman and his staff that keep this thing going, because most IT people would say, "You're crazy." I'm not going to try to take that on. And the second thing, I want to get back to Buildings and Grounds, and I apologize, because I forgot. The PTOs at the elementary schools have been incredibly active in doing things that we should be doing, i.e., playgrounds. And we've got two schools now that, the Oldham here and in the Willett, that are going to start actively fundraising to, to build more playgrounds. So, you know, it's truly an unbelievable team effort. And I'm going to sound a little bit like Mr. Ferris here. The hidden taxes that people pay who have kids in school, the rest of the town, they don't realize that and they don't understand that, that there is a tax already, and, and these people are all paying it, and it needs to be spread around more evenly, so. Now, we'll shut up.
Thank you.
Teresa, sorry, can I just ask, do we have information or can we get information? Because we've talked about this before, what the PTOs are covering, so I don't know if this is directly you, Mr. Riccardi or others, but I would love to see that all laid out, that this is what our PTOs have funded.
Yeah.
Even if just the last year, just to start.
Yeah.
Because I have sense, but I think we need those numbers.
Well, I will tell you that, you know, having done, been coordinating enrichment at the Prescott many years ago, you know, when Dr. Manaday was talking about the enrichment that the Oldham PTO has brought in here, the Tanglewood Marinettes and the, I forget what else. There were a couple of other really good programs, and I know that the, you know, talking with Barbara O'Connor and all that kind of stuff, all of that, that's thousands of dollars of money in order to bring that to our schools.
Just, I can share with you, as part of the budget subcommittee, we have started to work on that, and I've received an email from some of the PTO presidents with a list of that. And I will say that the one that I received, it was multi-page. I mean, and it's basic stuff, basic stuff that this school should be providing, like mulch for the playgrounds, not to make them look pretty so that they're safe. Like, paper products, like, these are basic things that we should be providing. But I can, I can absolutely forward that and put that in the team draft.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, like I said, I have a sense.
Yeah.
But I just feel like if we have it compiled and we can share, because it's the same as Mr. Riccardi, I think a lot of people do not know. And, you know, I have two kids in the school system. I know. I can tell you, I'm constantly, you know, doing it, and I know what goes on in the schools that I've been in in this district, which is four of them right now, not at the same time, two kids. Been through four schools. But I just think if we have that information, we need to get it out there.
Getting back to capital outlay, I'd like to ask for a motion to forward a request to the Town Capital Outlay Committee for $65,000 for a new wheelchair van and $145,500 for technology, as outlined in Mr. Kidd's recommendation. Thank you, Dave, and seconded by Michelle. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will forward this on to the Capital Outlay Committee. Tom Maloney is the chair of that committee, and he has, he's starting to plan meetings for that. I think it's going to be the first or second weekend in February, but I think it hasn't been finalized yet. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to move up the field trip approval to the next item on the agenda. Is that acceptable? Thank you, Teresa. Is there a second? Thank you, Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Mr. Jeb Brenn, if you could come up and join us, please. Okay. So, we have a out-of-state field trip proposal, and this has been signed off by the principal. And so, if you could tell us a little bit about the plan here?
Well, just one student. We're going to do an exchange with another student from Carlsbad High School in California. They run a pretty amazing program in Carlsbad. I've been friends with the teacher for a few years now. When I first got the job here, almost eight years ago, he helped me get in the door over here, because he's actually from the area. He grew up in Wellesley. So, we've had a nice little connection since I've been in Norwood. We just think it'd be a good experience to, you know, have his kid see what we do in our program and have our, our student go over there and see what they do. I think it works on two fronts. Number one, it's good for the student that goes there. The student that we're going to send, I think, is Joe Spodorski, who's an amazing TV kid. So, I think it'd be a great experience for him, but bigger than that, he comes back and shares what he sees in that other program, you know, with the kids in our program when he comes back. And it's also a way for us to show off what we do. I like to think that we do a pretty good job ourselves, so we send Carlsbad kid back with some great ideas about what we do in our classroom. So, that's where the plan is.
And what are the dates for this?
We're looking at February 20th, which is during the February break, sending Joe, so that he misses a minimum amount of school. That's a Wednesday. Have him return on the 27th with Jake Watts from Carlsbad, and then he'll do his week here, and then we'll send him back to California. So, that's the general plan.
Okay. And I know there were some questions about insurance. Has that been...
Yep. If you look at the third, third page, this is the same company that we go through for our, our student travel, and we were able to get liability insurance through them. The policy is there. It's the policy we usually do. And then, there's the homeowner's policy attached to the end, which we'll be staying at that house, not the fence, really under us, but...
Are there questions from the committee?
Yeah. My only question is, how did you get to pick this one student?
Well, he's by far my number-one student in the senior class. It wasn't a hard choice, honestly. We just, this kid's very mature. He runs a side business, the hockey guys that everyone's really familiar with in town. He's just sort of more mature than most of the other kids, I guess is a good way to say it, and we think he's a great representation of Norwood. He's very much a townie kid, like, he's going to represent us well, I think, going over there. The cool thing is, the superintendent of Carlsbad Schools is Norwood, who was born and raised here, so they're sort of looking forward to, to meeting our guy.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the plan?
I just want to say, I think it's a great opportunity for him to, to really showcase what you guys do. You do a phenomenal job, and I thank you for that. But I think it's, it's a, maybe it will expand, you know?
Yeah, that'll be great.
I'd love to see it get bigger and have more kids go there, and to bring it back to us for more fresh ideas as well. It'll be interesting to see, to see what they do on the West Coast versus what we do over here, but, you know, he's got a lot of bragging rights over there, that's for sure. So, I thank you for putting this together for him.
We plan on, you know, we're going to make some video, obviously, to market this. So, when we go to the STN convention in March, we hope to run, you know, some video that we, that we shot during this time period with the whole affiliate base, so.
Yes.
The reason that we're kind of doing this is Doug Green is the former president of STN, I'm the vice president, president-elect, and we're just sort of modeling, you know, normally when we're out of school, like, I'm the only guy. There's no math, like, the math department has all the math teachers and so on. So, usually, the TV guy's on an island by himself, and it's just nice to sort of share what we do. A lot of us have been in the game a long time. I'm now in my 22nd year. We've sort of had to carve out what we do. There's no book, there's no textbooks, there's, you know, constantly changing with the stuff that we're supposed to teach in the classroom with technology and whatever. So, we just think it's a really good opportunity to kind of share what we're doing and model for everyone else around the country. It's no different whether you're on the East or West Coast, storytelling is storytelling, and it's sort of the basis of our classes.
And to be clear, there's no direct cost to the district for this?
No.
The student is covering his own travel expenses and then agreeing to host...
Correct.
He'll be hosted there, and then he reciprocating with hosting here.
Yes.
Teresa, you are the one who's probably most familiar with our policies regarding this. Are we now in, are we meeting our requirements at this point?
Yeah, I think so. I don't see the policies in my packet. Do all of you have the policies, the filter policies that are supposed to be printed out?
No.
No? Okay. So, then, just off the top of my head, which I know we're going to talk about later, but there was two different policies in conflict with each other. One had said we needed 60 days, the other said 30, which is under 30. But I know at the last meeting, when this was first brought to our attention, we were just concerned more about the formality and the paperwork and that, those concerns. So, the forms sold out. We have all the information on insurance, which we requested and is in our policy. So, I think all the boxes are checked.
Okay. So, would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion approved.
All right. Thank you, Dave, and seconded by Michelle. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Brenn, for coming. Okay. Now, we move back to reports. Dr. Thompson, do we have anything under reports? Are we going to wait until the superintendent's report?
You can just go to the superintendent's report afterwards.
Okay. Then, the next item on the agenda is budget, and I have brought... Then the next item on the agenda is budget, and I brought something I just want to dig out before we get started on that. Okay, so I wanted to give everyone a brief budget balancing update. The Budget Balancing Committee has not met since we last met as a school committee, but it's the, there is a meeting set for this coming Monday at 6:00 PM and the Budget Balancing Committee has been invited to attend the Selectments Meeting on Tuesday, I believe that's January 29th, and we will be appearing at 8:00 PM. And so that's the latest from budget balancing. And then I just wanted to share a little bit of news that was posted on the Boston Globe website today. We had talked last week about Governor Baker and his plans, so Governor Baker has proposed a $1.1 million seven-year overhaul to the school budget formula.
One point.
One point, I'm sorry, 1.1 billion, yes. So on K-12 education funding, Baker unveiled alongside the budget plan, a much anticipated bill that would revamp the state's 26-year-old formula for determining how much each community needs to spend to provide an adequate education for its students, as well as determining how much of the tab the state and the local community each needs to pay. And this relates to the 2015 Legislative Commission that looked at the foundation budget. The, there's still not a whole lot of detail in this, but it says that Baker's 2020 budget proposes the state spend $200 million more on its portion of school funding costs. But just so everyone understands, I looked it up, the Chapter 70 money, the total for the state is currently about $4 billion. So spending $200 million more is good, but that's about a 5% increase and the Globe states that more than 85% of that is going to the so-called high-needs districts where at least 50% of the students are low-income. And although our low-income percentages have risen over the past years, we're not at 50%. So we don't know that we're going to see significant, no, this is of course the governor's proposal and then there'll be the legislature's proposal and then it'll all get hung up on that, but I, you know, I don't see anything here that says that we should expect a significant increase, but it's, it's very exciting that he's looking at a seven-year plan and by the time they get up to 2026, increasing that even more. And so I think that's exciting news, but in, for 2020, it's probably not, you know, it's certainly not going to solve our $3 million problem. So I just wanted to share that with that committee since we had just recently talked about that. But so where we are at with the FY '20 budget, and we do have our budget books, we currently need to cut $3.1 million to eliminate our deficit, but I do want to make it clear, there seemed to be some confusion. If there were an override of that, as the Budget Balancing Committee has recommended, that would eliminate the need to make these cuts and it would also add in extra things like $300,000 a year for a curriculum refresh and additional teachers to add some programs at the high school and some career pathways and project-based and personalized learning and also have some money available to increase our English language learner process and other programs like that as needed. So I do want to be clear that all, we, the budget that we have been talking about with the $3.1 million cuts, that's our contingent if there is no override, either that it's not put on the ballot or that it is put on the ballot and it fails. And we started to talk last week about our recommendations and, you know, what our preferences were and I realized after that meeting that there was one other thing that I wanted to talk about kind of more philosophically, and I think when we were going through the budget exercise last year and planning for the FY '19 budget, we recognized at that time that it was a bad year and that we were talking about in the future, planning for an override and therefore we engaged in some kind of one-year fixes. And we did things like, we cut the budget for library books. We not just reduced it, we eliminated the budget for library books. And I think, I still think that that was a good choice for that one year, but I think as we are looking at this year's budget for FY '20, we need to talk about what's a sustainable budget. And I don't think that eliminating library books is a long-term plan. Like at some point, our school district is going to need new library books and yes, we could forego them for one year, but now I think as we go through this exercise, we'll have to look at things that are kind of more sustainable. Maura?
Just off of that, and this is something, because obviously Maya and I are on the Budget Subcommittee and just to kind of give an update of some of the things that we talked about on Friday, that was one of the things that we discussed and I think what we did last year, and I stand by those decisions because I think philosophically, all of us were trying desperately to stay as far away from the classroom as possible and from programs as possible, so we eliminated library books. We took supplies down to basically nothing. But what we're tasked with this year, and part of what I think we should start to discuss tonight, is you can't run a school system without paper towels. I mean, just fundamental things that we cut last year in an attempt to get through. But this year is different in that if the override fails, these are cuts that we're going to have to live with for a while. So I think we need to be thinking realistic and what I, what I think, where that, I think, makes it much harder is that there's not much left that's going to get us to $3 million that doesn't impact the class, the staff, the teachers and the students in a very large way, because these one-year fixes, we can't, you can't run a school system with those for five years or however long it may be. And just one sort of, it's on the budget, but just one thing I wanted to mention because I'm not sure what angles we're getting here, not, it's not a knock to NCM, I just, I want to make a point that this room is full and I want to make sure that people at home, just in case we haven't gone to a wide shot, know that. And I, we'll talk about this more in my agenda and I'm not meaning to hijack anything, but I just want to take a second because I know maybe not all of you will stay till the very end to thank you. Decisions are made and impacted by people who show up, so thank you for showing up. And just also know that we see you out here and I, for one, am very aware of the stress and the shoulders that are out here and I'm sorry. I wish you were here because we're celebrating. I'm sorry that you're here because of this. So I guess that's a, I don't know where we go from there, but I think, I think we need to start having a conversation about, I don't think we should take votes tonight, but I think we should start to figure out what are eliminations that we can make to get to that 3.1 million that are sustainable more long-term. Not that it's sustain, yeah, not that it's sustainable.
Is it possible to get this in Excel so I can play around with it? Because, you know, this is a lot of just line by line and, I mean, I'd love to be able to highlight and say what's required, what we can move, what we can change. I mean, I'm pretty good at Excel, I'd love to play around with it and try to find something or some solution, but it's probably just be ugly like, here are the possible ways of doing this bad situation.
I think what, this format is set up the way the town needs to have things done in, you know, like the P codes and all that kind of stuff.
Of course.
So, but we do have spreadsheets of the projections that we did and so that's a place that.
Is that on the shared drive?
Uh-huh.
Awesome, yep.
Yeah, so that, I think, is the place to work. So I think that another thing that Maura and I talked about in the Budget Subcommittee meeting was that we do want to provide a, you know, a list of some options and, but we will do that in advance of our next meeting two weeks from now and then we'll be back at the Savage Center, we'll be able to, all of us be looking at the overhead and, you know, we can, I just think that'll be an easier time to do it, but we did take the point that we needed to talk about, you know, what could we do outside of the classroom? And so we did, tonight, I wanted to talk a little bit about buses, I wanted to talk about extracurricular activities and talk a little bit about elementary class configurations. Kind of limit our discussion to that for tonight and as Maura said, I don't think we're going to take any votes tonight unless we maybe take a vote that says we want to direct the administration to dig deeper into some particular thing and, you know, we've kind of thrown some things out there with some general questions and if there's things we want to ask the administration to research, then certainly we can vote on that tonight or at least ask for that tonight. So.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just the superintendent is trying to gate.
Oh, thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah, just a, just a couple of things to piggyback on what's been said. We're going to, we're going to have some difficult conversations. As administrative team, we've had a couple of weeks of difficult conversations. None of the options that we're looking at are good for kids or good for the, for the system. I think it's important to note that when we did the projections, we projected a $3.5 million shortfall and the first pass budget was 4.1, so that is definitely going in the wrong direction. With that being said, the other pieces, we don't really have completely real numbers yet. You know, the Senate and the House have not put forth their budget yet. The governor just came out with his plan. We do have a pretty high significant number of high-need students, so we might benefit from his proposal, but that doesn't mean the legislature's going to agree with it or the funding is going to come through. I know in the past, we've talked about some of the things we're going to talk about again here tonight. I'm not in favor, as I've said to the Budget Subcommittee, making any decision at this point till we have some harder, faster numbers and let people think about it, but the difference this year is we're talking about a structural deficit. That 3.5 million is a structural deficit, it does not go away. So whatever we cut this year, and Maura, you brought it up, we're looking at $650,000 worth of cuts next year, another $600,000 to $700,000 cut in year three and in year four, another 600, and then it drops to, you know, 550 or 500,000. If the override, if the structural deficit is not fixed, the cuts will continue. So as we look at this, these are not one-year things. These could, if an override does not pass, be long-term. And unfortunately, the things we're looking at, there's nothing here that is good for kids, there's nothing here for, that's good for, you know, the future of Norwood because the kids in your schools is the future of this town. There's a large portion who stay here proudly, they are going to be your citizens and your taxpayers in the future. So those are things we need to consider. You know, I was thinking back today, you know, two years ago, I started this process where I applied to come to Norwood. I decided to come to Norwood in large part because it was a community that believed in educating the whole child. The four As, the four As, the four As. That's all I heard about, that was a value that was presented to me that belonged to Norwood, academics, athletics, arts and activities. We are going to look at, with this budget scenario, without an override, at seriously compromising those four As. And it's going to be a difficult conversation, you know, we do have staff members here, I've been tried, been very diligent about trying to be open and honest with them about where we are, we are not making decisions at this point in time, but we are having very difficult conversations. I've asked my administrative team to sit there and create terrible situations for their schools, for their students and for their classrooms and for their teachers. So we have, we have a lot of hard work to do, whether that real number ends up being 2 million or 1 million, those are still cuts we have not seen before here in Norwood. So with that, I'm asking the committee for some direction because there's just too many options out there for us to keep going in a million directions. We need to kind of focus on some things and look back and get some good information to, to bring back to you folks, some recommendations from them and not recommendations on what we should do, but recommendations on what if we have to do is the least damaging. So with that, I'd like to turn it back to you folks.
Maura?
Just one, one point that I think is worth keeping in mind, that just as Dr. Thompson said, if we do make these $3.1 million in cuts, that doesn't solve the problem. We have to cut more going into because the structural, the nature of a structural deficit is it will never go away unless you cut enough to make it go away or you raise the money that you have coming in. But my, my point that I just wanted to highlight is you, you said that in the first pass budget, it was 4.1 million that we had to cut where we were banking on it being 3.5 million. So we're banking on it being 600,000 the year after and 700,000 in the year after, but look at what we just figured out. So it's likely that it wouldn't be that, it's likely that it could be higher. So I just think that that's worth pointing out. And I'm not sure where you want to start.
I was thinking we might start, so I, we said we'd want to talk about buses, we want to talk about extracurriculars, we want to talk about elementary school configurations. So if people look at the, it's a blue tab in my book, it's six, Transportation 616 is the category. So I just want everybody to understand, in the townwide budget book, the transportation of our regular education students is $741,000, but that's after we apply the $200,000 that we collect in bus fees every year. So really, it costs us about $941,000 to bus our students. And somebody asked me, you know, well, but don't bus fees cover that? No, bus fees cover just over 20% of the cost of running buses. Part of that is because we are legally required to, to transport some students depending on their age and how far away they are from their school, and so in that case, then they get free transportation. And then for kids on free and reduced lunch, they get, or they pay a reduced rate or free, or get free.
Free is free and reduced is reduced.
Reduced, right. So they get discounts on their bus passes too, but I think even if everybody was paying a bus pass, it still wouldn't be enough to cover the, the full cost of buses. We can't completely do away with buses. The, I know that some towns actually have no school buses, but it, state law says that students who are in grades one through six, who live more than two miles away from their school are, must be given free transportation and because the sixth graders all attend Lake Coakley and the Coakley is on the very southern edge of town, there are a number of sixth graders who are guaranteed free busing and so there's no way to, to eliminate busing. But we could, we can possibly look at reducing it, we could look at reducing, eliminating buses for the high school, which would save us over $200,000 a year.
Around 260.
Yeah. But I know that in the last couple of days, the drop-off at the high school has been particularly difficult and because more parents were choosing to drive their kids to school instead of allowing them to walk and so I think if we had eliminated all the high school buses that would have, if we eliminate all the high school buses, that will make traffic at the high school significantly worse, but we may need to consider doing that. So, and if we really wanted to take drastic measures, we could eliminate buses for grades seven and eight as well. We are not required to transport seventh or eighth grade students. Maura?
Just something to keep in mind, if we eliminate busing for seventh and eighth grade students, that means that it is likely to get to the Coakley, you'd have students who may have to walk across Route 1.
Yes. And given that the, that the middle school starts so early, they would likely have to be doing that in the dark. So, but is that something that the committee would like to, do we want to ask for hard numbers on that? Are those things that we want to ask the administration to pursue?
We have to.
Yes. Okay. So Dr. Thompson, if you can work on getting numbers for both of those scenarios, that we just eliminate high school buses and that we really go down to bare minimum, nothing that isn't mandated by the state.
nothing that isn't mandated by the state.
And just to be clear, is that mandated for the state just for seventh and eighth, or is that district-wide?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Because I, I know, I believe it's that we're mandated to bus anyone who lives more than two miles from the school that they're going to. So are we asking, just to be clear, what we're asking? Are we asking just to go down to the bare minimum for seventh and eighth? Or are we asking to go down to the bare minimum for every student in the district?
I think we would look at every student in the district, right?
Yeah.
Um, the, the advantage of having so many elementary schools is that there are not terribly many students who live more than two miles from their...
Right.
From their, um, from their school. But there are students who, because they have to cross Route 1 or something like that, are, are, they're currently provided a bus, but they do live less than two miles from their school, and so we are not mandated to do that.
Okay.
How is kindergarten, though, under the law?
Oddly, I think kindergarten is not required to be transported at all.
And currently, we provide kid busing for free?
Yes. When, when the, when the schools shifted from having kindergarten in the neighborhood schools to having one centralized kindergarten, that was kind of part of the arrangement, was that, um, busing was provided.
Right. And it basically goes from the elementary school to the, to, to the Willet. And it's a bus, and, and the buses, we have, we've already paid for it, so it doesn't, it doesn't, it's really pretty much a cost neutral.
So another question. So right now, our buses are tiered. They go to the middle school, then some go to the high school, some go to St. Catherine's.
Yes.
Then they go to the five elementaries, then they go to the Willet.
Yes.
So if we eliminated all high school busing, that's a significant chunk of time, excuse me, from a drop-off of the school start time at 7:20 at Coakley and 8:40 at the elementaries. You still pay for those buses?
Uh, right now, what happens is the, the number of buses we need for the Coakley, which is the most, 'cause you're driving, it pretty much drives the cost.
It's, it's 13 buses, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, but if you're only, you know, and I don't, we haven't looked at this, but if you're only doing sixth grade, maybe you have less buses, but longer routes. So...
Right.
So I, I think we need numbers for everything, district-wide, high school. And it would be helpful, I think, to break it out of what the cost savings would be if we just eliminate high school, if we just eliminate high school, seven and eight, and then if we eliminate busing for everyone who's not mandated to receive a bus district-wide.
Right. Because we may find, as Teresa alluded to, that there's minimal savings because you're already paying for the bus for the middle school, then to have them, you know, and, and if they're already going to the elementary school anyway, picking up a few more students may add minimal expense. So we, we will need to make reasonable, uh, decisions there. So, um, if we could get some numbers from that and advice from our new transportation director, that would be helpful.
Who's still learning as he goes?
Yeah.
He's very good.
Could we also look into, um, the current fee structure? Um, so of the ridership of the bus, you know, who's paying for the bus? What does that generate in revenue? And then when's the last time, I'm not proposing an increase in bus fees, but when is the last time that happened?
I believe it was three years ago, but we can, we should, I, we should look, research that.
Yeah, 'cause I know last year at this time, one of the discussions we had was around, um, you know, you can continue to increase the fee, but that doesn't necessarily generate more revenue, 'cause at some point, you're gonna increase the fee and have less...
Right.
For the lack of a better word, clients.
Right.
Um, so I'm just interested in the history there a little bit, because potentially, if the fee goes down, ridership goes up, and more of our bus fees or, or bus cost are covered.
Right. We, um, I know that, so our bus fee is currently $300 per year per student, and, um, I know it had been, I believe it was 200, and it was increased by 50%, and our, our revenue did not increase by 50%, it increased by less than that.
Yeah.
It increased a bit, but not, um, but there were certainly some families that decided that $300 a year wasn't worth it to them. They would find other options to get their students to school.
The other aspect of the bus too, is, um, the fee to take our elementary to the extended day program at the Savage, which I think is...
125, 175? They have to fee for the bus?
151-way.
One, how, what was it? 150?
$37.50 is a one-way. Um, they drive their children to the school in the morning. They pay a one-way fee to the town for 175.
So that's just something to look at too, with our, our busing at the end of the day?
Right.
How many kids are going to extend a day? And what's the impact on that program?
Kindergarten is not, uh, to extend a day.
Yes. All right. Any other bus-related questions?
So have we, um, looked at the transportation costs owning the buses versus, I know we had a discussion about that last year. I don't know if we have followed up on that. Um, is that something that we could look at too, to see if there could be a cost savings? I have no idea, but...
Well, and we probably would have to, have to find these numbers based on the current contract.
Right.
If we just put out a new, a bid for a new contract, they don't usually go down, they usually go up.
But as far as owning our transportation versus the way, um, not owning it?
So just to make sure everybody understands, we own our special education vehicles. We do not own the, the large yellow buses that bus our regular education students. And so that was the cost we were talking about just now, but it is something to consider is, you know...
Can we take a look at that?
We can. The best way to take a look at it is to have an audit done, which would be about $8,000. This is the same problem I had last year, but, but yeah.
Let's try and pull some numbers on that.
Dr. Thompson, what's the timeline again with the bidding process? The bidding process and the bus contract, what's the timeline?
Uh, I know it went out the end of last week. I'm, I'm not sure when it was. The, it's usually a month before they...
And the contract's up in July.
Contract is up in July.
So they need a new vendor by July.
Right, right. And I don't, I haven't actually looked at the contract. I don't know if there's a rider where you can do a one-year extension or something along that line, but... And there are things that we're asking for in that contract, one being the use of Versatrans, which is a routing software, which might be able to find deficiencies going forward with relooking at the routes, 'cause the routes seem to be more historical than anything else at this point.
Sir, I would comment.
Yes.
So, um, I actually looked into this a little bit, because the town of Randolph, where I work, they've transitioned to their own buses, which I think everybody here is frustrated with the bus situation and lack of bids. Um, Martha Coakley, if you're listening, please investigate. Um, but I'll, I'll be, all kidding aside, uh, I called the bus company that sold the bus to Randolph, and he said, yes, it's possible. Uh, it means a outlay of capital, which we have to ask the town for, uh, to replace buses, actually to buy buses, uh, piece at a time, um, relying on our town to maintain them, uh, relying on our, uh, special education dispatch to dispatch them, and gradually take them over bit by bit. But this is a long-term process. It's something we can't do, uh, next year, the year after, or even in this whole terrible budget cycle, so it's not gonna fix anything. I personally think that we should eventually get to that point where we have our own buses, 'cause even though we have to outlay a lot more money, we will save money long-term. But of course, I'm just shooting from the hip, and I don't have any hard numbers. So it's something that's very important to me to look at, but right now, it's not gonna fix our budget problem.
Yeah, I do think, you know, we need to, everything's on the table.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Uh, the next thing I think we wanted to talk, is there anything else about transportation to discuss? Okay, then, um, athletics, uh, are the section right, right before transportation? It's cat, it's, um...
Sure.
It's 615? Um...
What color?
It's white on mine. It's literally just the, the right before, yes. Okay. So, um, but this does not include, um, so this category here includes the fees that we have to pay for our, like, leagues and things like that, supplies, um, fees for officials, transportation, rentals, the medical, so that we can have the athletic trainer, um, and things like that. And that's $292,000. But that, I do not believe includes, um, stipends.
No.
And so I'm, wanna just make sure I include all the information for stipends. Maura, do you have a, do you happen to have a total for how much we're looking at for athletics?
Um, I know it's $292,017, and that's the school athletics town. I believe sports coaching, all stipends at NHS is $297,708.
Oh, yep. I just found that. Yep.
So that's P0658.
That's under instructional salaries in category 602, which is a yellow tab.
So that would be, so if, what we're looking at is combining those two numbers. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So just to be clear, if we completely eliminated high school athletics, we would be looking at something in the neighborhood of $600,000 in savings. Um, I personally believe that athletics are a, um, an important part of our student experience, and as Dr. Thompson alluded to, the five, the four A's and all of that. So one thing that the Budget Balancing Committee had talked about is, um, is there a way to make athletics self-funding? Uh, you know, if, if the schools cannot afford to support it, is there a way to still run athletics without, um, without having that budget and, that line item in our budget? So, um, Dr. Thompson asked, um, the athletic director to run some numbers, and you guys should have those here. Um, so this is just a sampling of some sports, so that we can look at roughly what we'd be talking about. So for example, um, field hockey, the varsity program, and we're, for this examples, we're just looking at varsity programs. Uh, the field hockey varsity program costs, um, a little over $10,000 to run, and if you divide that out compared to the number of girls on the team, that would be $487 per player. Um, our current, uh, athletic fees are $200 per student, per sport, with a cap of $800 per family. Um, and we also do offer, um, discounts for students who are on free and reduced lunch. So, um, this would be $487 per athlete, assume, but everybody would have the cap. Would be what we would be talking about, or if the program were to be self-funding. Or there could be some combination of some booster organization or something like that, and then contributions from the girls. Um, football, if you look at the varsity program, that costs $38,000 a year to run. The cost per athlete would be 13,000, uh, 1300, 1327 per student. And if you look at, um, boys and girls ice hockey, um, we're looking here at varsity programs, so, um, each program costs $38,000 a year to run, and so if you broke that out, it would be $2,200 per athlete for one season.
Just a clarifying question. I'm just not sure why football is 38,484 to run, and girls and boys ice hockey is 38,033 to run, but there's about a thousand-dollar difference. Is that ice time, or...
Size of the team.
Size of the team. Okay.
Size of the team.
Yeah, I think, um...
Ice, okay.
Yeah, the, the hockey team, I think it's 22 players that they're allowed to carry on a varsity roster, and football, they carry a lot more because...
Okay.
I'm gonna stop talking about it, 'cause I, I will quickly make it obvious, I know nothing about football, but I know the teams are bigger.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they, they cost similar amounts to run, but there are many more boys on the, the varsity football team than on the varsity hockey team. So I, I, I kinda wanna get the sense of the committee on this.
Can I, can I jump in?
Oh, yeah.
In other towns, they've gone to a pay-to-play. What they do is they fundraise, usually for a full year. But they fundraise, and then they put that into a fund, and then divide out the rest. So, but again, something like, uh, field hockey and football would be at a, at a time disadvantage. Um, you know, other sports like cross-country would be far less expensive. But what they do is they, they'll do fundraising, they'll ask for donations, they'll try to lower that, that total per sport, and then divide it out.
Maura?
Uh, just a couple of things I wanna throw out to the committee in terms of just sharing where I'm thinking. Uh, if we were to eliminate and put athletics towards self-funding, and obviously just in, in the spirit of transparency, we are gonna talk about fine arts next. It's not sports, and, you know, it's, it should be parity. That's around $589,700, uh, 589,725, so that leaves roughly 2.5 million still to cut, just to keep that in mind of where we're heading. Um, I think, I, I think something that occurs to me is we're sort of in a catch-22, because there are students who only come to school for sports and fine arts, but if we don't look at this, the amount of hits to the actual classroom is unimaginable. So I think we have to keep that in mind. I also think we have to keep in mind what we're really talking about here. If, if there's not an opportunity to fundraise, you know, I was on the Athletic Study Committee, and part of the reason that it was surmised that a lot of students aren't participating is that the fee is too high, and that's a fee of $200 per student, and we're gonna talk about $2,000 per student, so let's just keep in mind what we're really talking about. But if we do this, we still have 2.5 million to cut, so I, I think that we have to try to limit the impact to the classroom as much as possible, so I think it's something we have to consider.
Teresa?
Just to piggyback on what Maura was saying, 'cause I was gonna mention it too. This does go in direct opposition of what the Athletic Study Committee found. And as I said last week, everything we talk about here is in the direct opposite direction of every subcommittee or task force that we have formed, and all the hard work of all of our administrators and leaders. Um, and also on that athletic committee, which, you know, Maura corrected, I'm wrong, 'cause you served on it, um, but something that also came out of there was how desperately we needed to add back in middle school sports.
Yes.
Um, so again, just for anybody who's following these conversations, we've already reduced things, and they never come back. And we've been talking about things that we wanted to add in to help our teams be more successful, and now we're talking about decimating it. And, you know, I, I have to tell you, as a person who lives in Orton, has two kids, I have to go home and tell my seven-year-old he needs to stop playing sports, because there's no way that we could pay these fees. And, um, you know, I, he's seven, and I was at his basketball practice on Saturday through the NBA, the Norwood Basketball Association, that does an amazing program, and so many of our, our youth organizations do. He's in a practice with like 45 other first and second grade boys. And I honestly sat there on Saturday watching them, and just having a horrible feeling in my guts. And for anybody who thinks that these cuts are okay, I want you to go tell those kids that, 'cause I'm not gonna tell them it's okay.
Steve?
I'd like to add that for the folks out there that think that sports isn't important, um, you know, I, I work in business, and oftentimes when we interview candidates, uh, part of the conversation casual is, you know, what sports did you play in high school and college, and what did you achieve? It may be part of the casual conversation, but it's a great indicator of how well people will perform as part of a team, working, and their dedication and drive. These are skills that are very hard to, um, develop without teams and athletics, and incredibly important for people's futures. So, you know, we talk about something so simple as, oh, it's just sports, but it's not. It's developing a person and their personality and their dedication, drive for the future.
And I think that there's another important thing that we need to consider, is that, um, the programs that we offer impact which students choose to stay in our public schools. And, um, we, every year, we do have students who opt to, to choose private schools instead. Um, but we have a pretty good track record of people choosing private school, you know, having gone to private schools and coming back to Norwood High School. We, we see a significant percentage of kids who have attended, um, St. Catherine's through eighth grade, and then opt to come to Norwood High School. And, um, I have even seen anecdotal evidence of kids who have started out, um, at some of the local, uh, Catholic schools for high school and have opted to transfer to Norwood High School, because we do really offer great programs. But if we completely eliminate our athletics or fine arts, or, you know, the other things that we may be talking about, that's going to have a significant impact on what families choose to do, and if families are feeling that they're in a position where they need to be choosing private school for their... And if families are feeling that they're in a position where they need to be choosing private school for their students, then they're just that much less likely to want to be putting more resources into the public schools.
Teresa?
And I'll just, also just thinking back to the meeting we had at the high school and, when was that, November, December, whatever night we were freezing? Um, and, uh, our athletic director, you know, he presented to us, um, you know, the update on the move to the, the Tri Valley League and then all of our student athletes who, um, were shining. Um, so when you're talking about cutting these programs or taking away opportunities, that's not what a school system's supposed to be about.
Although I guess now that you say that, I, it reminds me, I should probably, just in the interest of disclosure, mention that my son is currently a freshman at the high school. My daughter's also an athlete at the high school, but she's in her senior year. So the, any changes we're making here will not impact her. But, um, my son is current, he played soccer in the fall and he's currently playing JV, um, hockey right now. And he hopes to run track in the spring. And so, you know, any sort of change like this would directly impact my family. Um, but do we want to, is there any direction we would like to give Dr. Thompson and the administration on how to get us information on this? Mara?
I'd like to, to also talk about fine arts at the same time if we can.
Yes.
On this, um, because I, I, we have another handout here, um, that goes through activities, cost, uh, to run that activity and, uh, what the per pupil cost would be. And I can go through that if you, if you'd like. Um, for instance, marching band costs fifty-five thousand dollars to run, so the cost per pupil would be a thousand dollars. And I'd also like to remind our, our, the committee and the, the public that when we were at that meeting at the high school, we also had members of the marching band there who had just won, uh, numerous awards. Uh, jazz ensemble is five thousand, it would be two hundred and fifty dollars. And I also think it's worth noting that right now you pay one fine arts fee. So if you, if you do the jazz ensemble and you do the play and you do chorus, it's only one fee. What we would be talking about here is fee per activity. Um, the fee, correct me, is it's a hundred and fifty for fine arts, is that right?
I believe so.
Yeah. Um, so the a cappella choir costs one thousand eight hundred dollars to run, so that would be ninety dollars. The summer musical costs forty thousand dollars to run, so that would be a thousand dollars. Uh, I won't go through all of these, but, um, honor band is four thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars and that's at the elementary level. So that would be a hundred and thirty dollars. This would be any extracurricular activity district-wide, elementary, Coakley and high school, there'd be a, a cost per pupil. And I believe, um, from the, the numbers that we sort of went through and I, I might be slightly off, but that the cost to the district for the fine arts is a hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So if we looked at eliminating and/or self-funding, uh, not and/or, but or self-funding both fine arts and athletics, that would be, um, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, six hundred and ninety-two, uh, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-two. So that would still leave, what, like, two point three to cut?
So, um, I will, wanna, do wanna make clear that when we're talking about these fine arts things, we are talking about the extracurricular fine arts.
Not the, not the in-school, yes, yes. So I, it's ter, we, it's terrible, but I think we have to look into it further, I think, to make sure that these numbers are correct. Um, and to perhaps get a larger sampling from the, um, the, uh, athletic director of some of the other sports. Because I know we, we asked this very late, um,
Right.
of him, so just to maybe get a little bit more of what some of those fees might be. Um, I also think it's worth maybe reaching out to some of the booster organizations and saying, if this is something that happened, is fundraising feasible at this point to help? I, I think that we should have some information from them before we're making this decision.
And to that point, what are they already doing? Because I know they're doing a lot.
Oh, they are.
Right, right.
And the, and the other, um, one of the other questions I have, um, so last budget cycle, and forgive me, I can't remember the exact percent, but we did reduce the athletics and fine arts budget by maybe ten or twelve, if I can kind of remember enough.
Yeah.
Um, and we, instead of going line item by line item, um, we decided just a general reduction and we are gonna leave it up to the directors to determine what those cuts were. I would like to know what they did cut this, this past year.
I think they, I think, I think fine arts raised some of the fees at the door in some of the places.
Okay.
Um, and I think some of our gates at the, at the, uh, at the games went up. And we did have, it was cold day, but we did have the football games here, so that helped a little bit. Um, but I could check on that.
Okay. Um, and I think that it's important to note that some of the, this list here is not necessarily the cost to run the whole program. It's the cost that the, the school budget had been subsidizing. As we've alluded to, the Parents Music Association,
Yep.
in this, you know, has been, has been doing things that I know, um, you know, the honor band, uh, attends the, the Great East Festival every year and that's a field trip that the students pay for directly. And so, um, you know, it, it does cost, although there's no direct fee to participate in the honor band, um, you wind up having to pay for the field trip. So it still becomes something that the parents are contributing.
Michelle?
Yeah, so, um, along with Mara's point, I'd like to get a full summary of if we were to do a self-funding of athletics, what's the total number? What is the number? You know, rather than just a little bit of this and that, I'd like to know a, a full number, what, what is it gonna save us? And the same with the, um, because it says estimated per pupil cost. Um, something a little bit more concrete with the fine arts department, if we were to do something like that.
Yeah.
We need some more solid numbers.
Teresa?
So last year when we were looking at the budget too, I, I know we were looking a lot at the elementary level and talking about getting rid of the elementary honors band orchestra and chorus. But just as a reminder to people, if you eliminate that, you impact your entire program. And, um, as a parent, I, I was really involved with that last year since my daughter was involved. And, and last spring at the, um, the MICA, all three of those ensembles, that gold, the honors band, the honors orchestra and honors chorus. Um, so we're talking about, you know, elementary, middle and high school. And, um, I was in a meeting with our task force last night with Kathy Connor-Moan and then, um, afterwards, just talking to her a little bit. And, um, she was mentioning how many other districts reached out to her for mentoring. Um, and asking her, how do you have such a successful program? And we're really looked at with so much respect in the community for what we do.
I think it's really wrapped up, I think Norwood's identity is, you know, like, it's, uh, the pride in the, the music program across the district is, is something that's really special in Norwood. And the fine arts program in general, not just music.
Right.
Mara?
Uh, just to be clear, we're talking about eliminating two of the four A's.
Right.
Mm-hmm, right.
Oh, and the only reason we haven't talked about activities yet is because we don't really have like an activities director that we can go to. But it's not like, yeah, that would be on the list too.
Um, and just something I, I think is worth, um, just bringing up is what Mr. Ricardi said earlier about the hidden taxes. So what we're already, the PTOs and the booster organizations are supplementing things that we can't afford because we don't have the money to. Um, but if we were to do this, it would basically be, you know, a, a small group subsidizing something that the town really cares about, because we don't wanna eliminate it, because it is wrapped up. But someone has to pay for it. And if the town isn't gonna, it's, it's, what town do you wanna live in?
Yeah, and, you know, and, and I worked in a town that had gotten rid of their fine arts at the elementary and, and middle school level and they were three years into that, it took me seven years to turn that around.
None of this stuff ever comes back.
It's still, it's still never, you, you know, maybe now they're, they're back where they were. But this is not, when you, when you stop a program like that, it, it's devastating, so.
As far as, um, activities go, could you look, could we look at stipends to see that?
That's what we've been cutting, yeah, so, um,
The other thing along activities is, is we don't charge an activity fee.
Mm-hmm. In terms of stipends, I think I have that here. It's, um, stipends for clubs and activities at CMS is eighteen thousand, six eighty-three. And at the high school, it's twenty-six thousand, sixty-six. So I, I do think in terms of parity, if we're making arts and athletics, um, self-funding, you'd have to do the same for the activities at the Coakley and, and, and the high school, even though that's a smaller number, I think, in terms of fairness.
Yep.
Yeah, those are also, uh, those stipends are in your budget book under that same, um, instructional salaries in section six oh two. And, um, P code oh six seven eight and oh six seven nine, those are those stipend codes. It's a few pages in. I think it's oh six oh two dash four. Yeah, okay.
Um, sorry, as we were just mentioning, activities at Coakley, to go back to transportation for a second, um, the late bus at the Coakley four days a week, you could have information on the ridership of that as well.
All right, any other questions that, or do we wanna move on and talk about, um, elementary school configuration? All right, let's move on. This is helping us, I guess, just give everybody a sense of the scope and allowing us to ask some questions. So, absolutely, was there a motion for recess?
Uh, one, I just, yes, but I wanted to make one point. I was just trying to carry the one and do long division, because I don't have a calculator. So if, just to keep a running total, because I think it's important, um, is that if we were to eliminate or self-fund all activities at Coakley and, and the high school, that would be a savings of forty-four thousand, seven forty-nine. So if we added that to arts and athletics, that would be a savings of eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-one. So it's still leaving two point eight million to cut.
Thank you, all right, so, um, no, it can't be two point eight million. Maybe two point three million, sorry. Mara, is that two point three million?
Um, no, it was eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-one.
So it was three point one.
Oh, right, I forgot the one.
Yeah, okay.
Carrying ones over here.
Okay, right, so, um, but Michelle has asked for, uh, made a motion for a five-minute recess, Mara seconds, all in favor? All right, we'll take a brief recess. Welcome back, I'll call the school committee meeting back into session. Um, we are continuing with budget and FY twenty budget. We've so far looked at, um, well, we've briefly discussed busing, athletics, uh, extracurricular fine arts and extracurricular activities. Um, the other thing we had said that we wanted to discuss a little bit tonight was, um, elementary, uh, configuration. And in your packet, um, you will see some projections for the elementary enrollment and a, um, this is the, uh, elementary enrollment and then a little bit of an analysis of some elementary configuration options. So this is something that the budget subcommittee has looked at a little bit. And so I just wanted to kind of go through, um, a little bit of the discussion about this and, and kind of get some feedback from the committee. And again, this is a place where we, um, don't have complete numbers in some places. We kind of wanted to get a feel for the committee about what we wanted to, um, pursue. So, um, just wanna remind everyone that our current model, we have one kindergarten building and five bill, yeah, elementary buildings, which are grades one to five. As we know, the neighborhood schools have many benefits for children and for families, but, um, five small schools also create some challenges. So we have some inefficient use of resources. We have to add extra teachers to keep the class sizes manageable at each school. Um, and so, and the administration and overhead expenses are high with running six elementary-level buildings. Um, to talk a little bit more, to give a little bit of detail to the inefficiency issue, um, this current school year, we have sixteen first-grade classes, um, with an average class size of seventeen point six students each. It's not that we necessarily thought that we really needed class sizes below eighteen, but in most cases, we were trying to avoid class sizes of more than twenty-five. Um, and, but it is, there is some inefficiency there. If, if students were distributed evenly and we could reduce the number of classrooms, if we had fifteen teachers, that would be an average class size of eighteen point seven students. If we had fourteen teachers for first grade, that would be an average class size of twenty point one students. And so it seems like, you know, we, if the students were distributed across the five elementary schools in a different way, we could get, potentially get away with fourteen teachers and still have manageable class sizes. But because of the distribution of our students, we really need sixteen teachers in order to keep from having some, a few enormous class sizes. The other issue with having five fa, small schools is that it creates some inequities across the district. Um, in a particular grade, the class sizes can be much higher in some schools than in others. Um, and there are variations in the English language learner and other high-needs populations across the elementary schools. But to give some specifics, this year, the Prescott has forty-nine third graders and those are spread across three classrooms, and so they have fifteen to seventeen students per classroom. Um, the Oldham has forty-five third graders, so only four less. But it, they're spread across two classrooms, so they have twenty-one to twenty-four students per class. So you see that kind of, um, difference across the district. So we kind of talked about what would be some potential solutions to these, to some of these challenges. Um, we could potentially reconfigure the grades so that each building covers one grade. Meaning that, you know, all of the first graders would go to one school and all the second graders would go to another school. And, and to be clear, we are, we are brainstorming here. We're talking about like the pros and cons of all of them, I'm not advocating for any of these. Um, but, you know, the pros of that means it's efficient use of teachers and each class for a particular grade would be approximately the same size. Each Norwood student would have a similar experience. Um, and the positive financial implications is you could potentially eliminate five to six classrooms across the elementary level without creating any unreasonable class sizes. But then there's also some significant cons. We likely would have to stagger elementary start times because we can't have, um, you know, buses running around to all these schools all at once. Um, families would have elementary students accret, spread across multiple schools. Students would need to change school every year. Um, special education programming would need to change substantially. Um, and currently we have programs where we have multiple grade levels in one program, but you need to keep your students with their peers. And so we'd have to completely blow up that model of having the task program at one school and the PACS program at another school. And it would be more like the Willett where they try to service all the special education needs at each school. Um, we don't think the Callahan School would be large enough to hold an entire grade. And the, um, the negative financial implications is that the busing would be complicated and costly. And I think the special education costs would increase prohibitively. So, um, I think that that is probably off the table, but something to just consider so that, you know, we can say, yep, we thought about that and this is what we're thinking. Um, we could redist, that, people have also asked me, why don't you just redistrict the schools? Um, to even out the distribution of the students. And that could also give us, um, efficient use of teachers. We could hopefully make each class for a particular gra, grade approximately the same size. Again, we could, maybe would be able to introduce, uh, eliminate five to six classroom teachers without having huge class sizes. Obviously, redistricting would be disruptive for students and families and the town as a whole. Um, but I also wanna point out that it would likely only fix things for one year. When you look at, I, I spent some time digging into the details and looking at the year-to-year distribution between each school district. And so, for example, if you look at the Cleveland, next year, we think that nineteen percent of the first graders will be in the Cleveland district. But for the fourth grade, thirty percent of the fourth graders will be in the Cleveland district. So we could find a solution that was perfect for one year and say, okay, this gives us this perfect distribution. But we know when you look year-to-year, it's not like we see a consistent distribution that the Cleveland always has twenty-five percent of the kids and we can count on that grade to grade. It just, it, our districts are so small that a few families here and there can make a significant difference. And so, um, it doesn't seem like redistricting once is going to solve this problem. Um, we could consider doing away with set districts, geographic districts at all. And we could register kids for kids for schools with some lottery of some sort, or, you know, with some preference for which school they live near, but in that situation, you know, the families wouldn't know which school they were going to be assigned to until they're, until they registered for first grade. It does have, you know, the advantage of being efficient use of teachers, each class for a particular size, you know, all the same advantages that we've talked about with other things, you know, and being able to eliminate some classroom teachers without the huge class sizes, but it would be really complicated to set up. It means families would not know which school their children would attend until they registered for first grade, and in terms of negative financial implications, it requires significant resources to manage the school assignment process each year. And, I mean, that would have implications on, you know, potentially busing, and, you know, it would also have implications on the real estate market. So, these are things to consider. We could look at hybrid options, like, we could think about combining the Callahan and the Oldham districts, and grades one and two could go to the Callahan, and grades three to five could go to the Oldham, or some sort of creative thing like that. We didn't dig too much into that, we just wanted to kind of see if that was something that the committee wanted us to consider. We could consider closing an elementary school, likely the Callahan since it's the smallest, and redistrict into four schools. The advantage is that we have a lot of the same advantages we have four plus, we would eliminate some administrative expenses, and, you know, in addition to eliminating five to six classrooms, we could eliminate the salary for a principal, a nurse, a secretary, a custodian. Of the cons, I mean, obviously, this would be disruptive for students and families. If we were completely close the Callahan, we would need to pay back the MSBA for the support that they gave us to replace the boiler there a few years back. And if we were also, probably more importantly, if we were to completely close it, it would be prohibitively expensive to reopen it because we'd have to bring it back up to code if we ever close it, and, and the Callahan, as you know, is a very old building that doesn't meet all of the standards of the current ADA. But if we could move the lead program there, or the central administration there, then that would still be a school use, and so I think, we believe that that would avoid some of those issues. We're not sure, there's some room in some of the classrooms, like, we know that here at the Oldham, last year, we eliminated two classrooms due to budget constraints, so there would be room to put two additional classrooms here, but not all of the elementary schools in town have rooms, so it's possible that we might need some portable classrooms to absorb extra students. And then the negative financial implications to consider would be the cost of the move itself. We would likely, this would be beyond what we could do just with our Buildings and Grounds Group. Cost of portable classrooms, it's possible extra busing would be required, we'd really have to dig into that and see, and of course, it also depends on what we wind up doing with the busing at the middle school and high school levels. And then another idea that was floated is potentially a multi-level move. If we could squeeze the eighth grade into the high school, push the fifth grade up to the Coakley, and then move all the kindergartens back to the neighborhood schools and close the Willet, would be something to consider. The advantage of closing the Willet as opposed to the Callahan is that it's actually much closer to code, so we could basically put the Willet on mothballs and shut it down and still play, if we needed to reopen it at some point in the future. This particular option would create complications at many, many levels. I didn't, we didn't even list out all of the cons. I think it's pretty clear that it would be, although Dr. Thompson said that there's, it's possible if we.
Yeah. Well, either, you know, bottom line, closing a building would need to be done in conjunction with reducing staff, because you would need to have space unless you're going to, because if you brought in portable classrooms, you're pretty much, you're not really saving any money by doing that. And again, the numbers are not all there at this point in time, but, you know, you usually have to rent those for a certain period of time, so you're locked into it as well, but, but there, you know, with reducing staff, there is the possibility, at least at the first blush, of having the kindergarten go back to the neighborhood schools, class sizes would go up to the mid, mid to high twenties, so. But you're going to need to, you're going to need to, in order to do any sort of move, you're going to need to increase class size, closing a building. The disadvantage of the Callahan, repaying the boilers, which really is not an option, but if you move other people in there, you don't stop heating it, you don't stop the lights, you don't stop the water, you're still paying for utilities, you still have the building costs. So, but, obviously, either one's super great. Normally, when you redistrict or combine schools, you've got to decrease in enrollment, and you have two schools that can take the enrollment, that's not the case here in Norwood.
No, our enrollment numbers look pretty flat.
Yeah, actually, we're up 10 this year compared to last year. They're still coming.
So, any thoughts from the committee and Maura?
We've talked a lot.
Okay, Teresa?
Theresa, you go first.
Okay. Couple thoughts in no particular orders. Go with me again as I try to connect the dots. So, first about the Callahan. Yes, it's the smallest, it's the smallest by 10. So I just think there's a lot of information out in the community that, oh, Callahan is so small. It only has 10 less students than the Oldham, so to me, they're statistically equivalent in the number of students in those buildings. But something else about Callahan is that they have 12 task kids enrolled in that school, and the task program is one of our most high-needs population. I can't imagine adding any more transitions or potential trauma to that population, and I also don't know where that program goes in any of our other schools. So that's one thing, I just think we have to be very mindful of the task program and their needs. If we close any school and we somehow redistrict, combine, I do have questions around Title I. So right now, our Title I schools are Callahan, Oldham, and Bolch, and I don't know. I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just talking about through the one through five right now, but yeah, I'm the well, but I don't know with the current five elementaries. If we start moving students around, do we potentially lose Title I money? Because, like, our whole district isn't Title I, only certain schools are, and I don't know how that Title I funding is calculated, and I just want to make sure, because I know we already lost in Title I to no fault of our own. I wouldn't want any type of move to inadvertently take away funding, because I know we have a lot of needs that are, that are serviced through the Title I grant. Another thing, I don't know if we can, if we close a school and move students around, does that really save a nurse salary? Because the research that I was doing, and there's no state mandates, but the American Academy Pediatric recommends that your nurse ratio is one nurse to 250 students. We're kind of already over that in a lot of our schools, so I don't know if we save the nurse's salary. I have questions around the modules. I was trying to go through my notes from Paul Ricardi when we did the preschool, and we were potentially looking at adding modules there, but I myself moved over the summer, so my notes are not what they used to be. I'm trying to find them in my basement. I think, and I would like to, I think he was saying at that time, is 200,000 in anyone else's mind with the classroom module? Over five years or 10 years?
I think, yeah, I want to say 25,000.
Yeah, I think it was around 20.
But it was required at the five-year contract or something?
Yeah, you usually, you usually, the problem is you usually sign a multi, they don't deliver them for a year.
So I think that's something, and I just think, like, if we go through all of this transition in whatever direction we take it as a school committee, at the end of the day, is it cost-effective? And if the answer is no, then why are we going to go through this and cause every student, excuse me, and family and staff stress? I would be interested in knowing more, as Maya was just talking about, the actual physical space in each classroom. So there might be two rooms open here at Oldham. I believe at the Cleveland, right now, they have a room solely dedicated to music and another room solely dedicated to art. I don't believe that happens at the Bolch, I know for a fact it doesn't happen at the Callahan. So Callahan splits one small room in the basement between the art and music program. So I just need a better understanding of physically what we're talking about. I think it's important for people to understand that our five schools are not set up the same way. So Cleveland and Prescott, obviously, are mirror images of each other, but those classrooms are physically larger. So, when you look at, you know, class sizes, the Cleveland has some of the highest consistently classes there, I mean, they're at 23 in a number of their classes, but the one benefit is they do have physically larger space. I don't know how you would get any more students in a classroom at the Callahan. You know, when we took a tour last year, those classrooms are so small, and then I worry about fire code, and I worry about safety. There's so many things that go into this, way beyond just the dollar sign and just the number that we're seeing on registration. I've been kind of toying with analysis for a while on my own, and thank you, Maya, for what you did. The solution is getting rid of the five-school model and building brand-new schools, but that's obviously not.
It's going to work for September.
Right, yeah, by September. You know, we still have to talk about, you know, the long-term planning of the Coakley. I mean, the Coakley's 10 years away, doing what truly needs to be done for the elementaries is like 20 years away. So those are just a couple of my initial reactions of those.
Yeah, I think, Teresa, you raised a good point, that the Callahan is not that much smaller than the Oldham in terms of enrollment, but physically, it is the smallest.
Yeah, just to clarify what we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Maura? So, just to kind of come back to where we're at, I believe that the number is, for a million dollars, it's around 18 staff members, is that correct?
Roughly.
So, what we're looking at, because I think it leads into this conversation, is, say we were to go self-funding for all activities and sports and fine arts, we're still looking at between 36 to 38 staff. So, I think part of the conversation with starting to look at a building is how do we manage that? You know, it's like, if you, if you're looking at that number of staff, if you're taking it from every building, does that kind of hobble the whole district, or is there a way to kind of triage it in a way so that, you know, it's, you know, I agree with you, Teresa, that I think any move is going to be completely impactful for staff and students, but is there a way to kind of manage it a little bit? But one other thing I do want to bring up, and I just want to make sure we're being clear, we're talking about the Callahan and the Willet, but I, I want to be clear that if we are, if we do go down this path, I don't want one level to be more adversely impacted than all the other levels. Like, I don't think it would be fair for all of those cuts to come from elementary. You'd have to be looking at Coakley, and you'd have to be looking everywhere else, because otherwise, I just don't think that's right. But I, I think that that's part of the, this sort of larger conversation that I think we should have as we're moving forward, and in terms of giving direction to the administrative team to give us harder numbers, is if these are the numbers we're looking at, and like, you asked last week, Dave, what percentage of our, of our budget is staff, is staffing, is people, and it's 80%. So if we still have 2.3 million to cut, you know, in terms of get to that number, unfortunately, that is what we're talking about. I mean, very unfortunately, especially at that type of number. So I think that in terms of this analysis, I think this is a really good, good spot to start having very difficult conversations, which then, in a way, dovetails into why we have to start having these conversations now. If we go with any of these, this is a massive undertaking. I mean, we can all remember how difficult and challenging and time-consuming, and in terms of teachers giving their time and everyone to move the little mustangs, and that was six classrooms. We're, we're talking about, you know, uprooting, building, all of the buildings. You know, with, with one of these, it would be district-wide. So, I mean, I do think that there has to, there's a lot of planning that goes into this, which of course dovetails into your letter that we're going to talk about, but I do think it's important to kind of have some of these conversations to come out of this meeting with giving the administration some direction about what we'd like them to, to continue to investigate.
Dave?
So, there's a crude analogy I could have used, but probably better analogy would be trying to wrap a Christmas present without enough wrapping paper. So there's really no good way to do it. So I have a completely terrible idea that's very simple and, you know, without too many rough decisions, evaluating this or that, there is no good this or that, they're all bad decisions. What if we basically say, like, what things are required that we cannot touch, we cannot cut, we cannot, figure out what the number's left, and then everything that we can cut gets an equal percentage distribution across the board? Sequestration, you know, and then everyone's going to have to figure out what to do with that, that money. I mean, that's a, I don't know if that's even possible, but it's something that would just be, hey, we're just going to split the baby in half and, and that's the way it's going to be. Because these are very hard and bad decisions, and there's no good way to really do it.
Just, I, I completely take your point, and I don't mean to be, but that is what we were elected to do. That's, it's our.
Oh, to do it in a nice, as good a way as possible.
It's our job to give them, to give the administration direction on how we think the best way is, is to do it, and I, I think it's, I totally take your point, but I think unfortunately, that it's, it's on us a little bit.
We've actually, in an essence, already done that for the last five years.
Right.
Basically, we've cut all the extra, we've cut the PD, we've cut all of the things.
Oh, no, no, I understand, I'm saying, the deep cuts, where you're going to say, like, you know what, this may teach us in this program, this may teach us in that program, it's, everybody's going to get an equal cut.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't want to be the person that says, this is worth more than everything, it's all important.
Yep.
Well, I do think that there's value in kind of running the numbers and saying, well, look, this part of the budget is locked in, and there's nothing we can do about it, and, you know, the out-of-district tuitions and the special edge of transportation and, and the English language learners and all, like, figure out what's locked in, and then just to go through the exercise and say, what percentage are we looking at of the things that we have some control over?
Right.
That's what I would like to know, I'd like to know what is impossible to touch because of state mandates, and what do we have left? Because as we talk about things, we can speculate, speculate, but, you know, unless we actually know what we're allowed to cut, what we have, or mandated by law, we really should have a sense of that.
Michelle?
Yeah, thank you for doing this, Maya, the analysis. What I'd like to see is if, if we as a school committee are interested in looking into elementary configuration, is that something that we want to do, number one?
Right.
And number two, I really like each one of these, much more information, like, it says positive financial implications, well, what are the positive? I want numbers here. I think it would be much easier to make that decision. When, when you say negative financial implications, well, how much of the negative fin, what are we talking here? So that we can really, I mean, we really have to dig into each of these choices before we can make a choice.
Absolutely, yeah. I was just hoping to put some structure around it so that we could.
Yeah, you did a nice job.
Figure out where to go, but there's a lot more questions. And so I guess the question is, is there, are there some things that are just completely off the table and we just don't even want to dig in too deep, or are there some things that we do want to dig into?
And I don't know if you really can, because we don't have the numbers here, we don't have specifics here, so I don't know if you, you could do something like that?
Yeah, I mean, and there's also a time factor in here, you know, you know, and, you know, i- if the override doesn't pass, this might be a two-step process, where you're reducing in one year and then spending the next year trying to redistribute.
Yeah, I mean, we really have to study this first.
Right, because if you're going to redo, I mean, anyone I've talked to, when you talk about redistricting, it's a, it's a year-plus process if you're doing it in a rational way.
Are there any other districts around us that have done something like this, that we could go speak to them and see how they did it?
Yeah, I mean, yes, most have either built a new school and are closing two and moving things around, or they have a drop in enrollment.
Maybe similar to one of these options?
I, we can ask, I doubt there's any, uniquely Norwood, I mean, there's no, I mean, there are not a lot of districts that have the number of elementary schools Norwood has.
No, I mean, I know that Medfield, like, all the, I don't know exactly how they set it up, but I think it's like all the kindergarten and first graders go to one school, and all the second and third graders go to another school.
So maybe we should talk to them and see.
Right. You can, you just, right. You can, and that, that is something that, you know, but that's, that's got to be a study in how, I mean, a grade in each building is, you know, because then you've got five transitions before they go to the middle school, that's not necessarily good too, so how do you, how do you do that? But that might be a long-term study, but that, and that might save us some money, but that's still not going to get us to, and then there's the whole busing piece and the software to do the routes, and there's a lot, there's a lot, this is.
Like, I can't imagine making this decision for September.
Right, well, I think that, well, well, I think that, well, I, I think the decision is, are you going to, well, because if you're with the numbers right now, if you're not going to try to reduce a building and lay off staff, then you're going to have to lay off more staff and you very well might be in a position where you have a teacher moving between two rooms. Okay, so, you know, the term I used, warehousing kids would, would become more of a reality.
What do you mean by moving between two rooms?
You would have one teacher and children and you would not have enough room to have all the children in one room.
How would that work?
Not very well.
It wouldn't work at all.
That's why, that's why it's, no, that's why it's not, that's not, it's not on the list. But, but where you could, where you could spend, where you could save two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand dollars closing a building.
I think the point is, I don't think that all of us together, combined can actually make a decision like this until we have a law.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, this was, right, we never anticipated there'd be any decision, it was kind of like a starting point.
Right, and, and the real question is, looking at that and some of the other, you know, and I said, did I say that it looks like it's possible to just move the kindergarten and then maybe do, because realistically, if that was some of the committee decided was a good option, there's no physical way we could do all of that moving in eight or ten weeks. There's no way, and even, even moving one grade or closing one school, we probably would have to hire movers. So we're still digging a little bit deeper into that, but.
But we can get some more, um, numbers here.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Teresa? Couple thoughts, so one, I mean, we currently have thirteen kindergarten classrooms. I don't see how the five schools stay one through five and absorb thirteen kindergarten classrooms. Um, but secondly, Maya, you asked, is there anything on here that we would say definitely not? And just my personal opinion is option number six, the multi-level move. Um, K to the neighborhood schools, five to Coakley, eight to the high school. Logistically, that's a nightmare, physically, I think it's a nightmare. From a developmental point of view, it makes me shudder. Um, I mean, as you know from, as you might remember from other conversations we've had around the middle school, I'm still not sold on the idea of fifth grade ever going to middle school. Um, but at the Coakley right now, it's really not even developmentally appropriate for sixth graders to be there because it's set up as a junior high, which is why we want to build a middle school. Um, and if we take the eighth grade to the high school, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe where now we would then be overcapacity of our newest building in the district. So that doesn't seem to make any sense either.
Yeah, by at least a hundred kids.
Yeah, so I, I tend to agree, um, that the multi-tier move is just probably, but as, as Dr. Thompson said, you know, if we did something like this and there is no override and we're looking at cuts for the following year, then maybe it's a multi-year thing, like, well, the first step is we close the Willet and push the element, the, the kindergarten back to the local schools and then maybe, you know, we find that that's not sustainable and need to do something else.
Maura?
So. I just, I don't know how you move kindergarten back to the neighborhood schools because I, without doing these other moves, because I, I just don't see how there's room.
You reduce, you reduce, there, there are some empty rooms.
Okay.
At the elementary level.
Enough for thirteen classes?
No, you would have to reduce, you would, you, you can't, you're still talking about reducing staff. It's just how, it's just, you're talking about reducing less staff. So you use the, you use the extra rooms, we don't necessarily have a music room anymore. Music would go into the classroom, so there's a classroom, so, and then you, we would have to do some layoffs as well.
So I know, I believe Maya, you had given us, um, some, or I had looked at some information about, um, schools that do have empty rooms and music rooms and I know not all of the schools do. So just to wrap my head around it, the idea would be if we move kindergarten without doing the multi-tier move, like a school that has three sections of second grade would be going down to two second, sections of second grade. So you'd be moving them back, but the class sizes in the rest of the, the grades would, would go quite higher.
But they might have to do that anyway.
Anyways.
Because of these cuts that we're talking about, so.
You're going to have to, you're going to have to increase class size with the numbers we're talking about.
Right.
Kate, you know.
But doesn't that put much more of the onus of these reductions on the elementary?
No, because we're also talking about reductions at the middle school, we're talking about reductions at the high school as well.
Well, and of course, all the athletic and fine, most of the fine arts.
Would all be at the, the school.
And the activities, that already was kind of heavy on the high school. And busing could potentially hit the high school most.
So, uh, just one other thing, uh, while we're here, um, in terms of you had asked for options that we don't think are feasible. I would say, one, reconfigure grades that each building covers one grade.
Yeah.
Option number one.
Also not feasible.
I also would say number two and number three, I don't think that redistricting, like, just as you said, we can redistrict for this year, sure, but really the problem is something that we'd have to redistrict looking at it at a longer term. Like you said, most districts do this at an overall one-to-two-year period. So I think that that's, you know, not really getting us where we need to be. And the idea of a lottery, I don't, I don't think that's worth pursuing. Um, but I, I do think that to give direction to the administration, I, I do think we have to look at redistricting, or not redistricting, but some sort of redistribution within the five elementary schools. I think it's, it's prudent to. You know, kind of, it just as Michelle said, getting numbers for these options.
Right.
I think, I think it makes sense to get numbers, or numbers for option four, consider a hybrid Callahan-Oldham district. And maybe it's more than just, I mean, maybe it's more than just Callahan-Oldham, something like that. Um, I think we do have to look into closing one elementary school. And then I think if we amend option six to be just bringing the kindergarten back to the neighborhood schools. Um, but along with that, I, I, it's, I want to make sure it's not one level of teachers that's being hit. You know, I understand it would be programming at the high school and the, and the Coakley, but I, I just wanted to make sure that's clear.
Absolutely.
So I think directing the administration to get us numbers and further options for four, five and amended six.
Yep.
Teresa, uh, Michelle?
Yeah, so I don't really have a problem with number six being a middle school teacher. I've taught six through eight as well as five through eight. And, um, in the five through eight district, um, it was well-done, it was, um, the location of the fifth graders was well-thought-out. Um, I was a curriculum coach with the fifth grade teachers, it was really, it was really a nice group of teachers that just really worked by themselves in their own little area. So there wasn't a lot of mixing with the seventh and eighth grade students. I've also done six through eight, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind looking at that. Maybe the, um, five through eight in the kindergarten move at this time, but I would like to really look at that and get some more information because we have no information on that at all.
Right.
Teresa?
I'm going to propose something new.
Okay.
New on the sheet. Um, so. Conversations that I've had, um, with early, the early educators, the principals, um, and also just in my professional world, um, is having school models of K two, K through two and three through five. Um, and that's actually what is recommended by the National Association of Education of Young Children. Um, and I did quick math, so I'm probably not exactly right, but it looks like K through two, we have eight hundred and thirty-seven students. Three through five, we have eight hundred and fifty-two, so basically fifty-fifty. We have six schools we could play around with here, including the Willet. If we're going to.
Yeah, you'd.
You need to go down to five.
You need to go down to five.
But I think we can cut teachers and still have six buildings. Not that I'm wanting to cut teachers.
Right.
Um, but okay, let's say we're just going down five, let's say that we're agreeing, we absolutely have to cut a building, which I'm still not convinced we absolutely need to do, but let's say we do. Um. And physically, space-wise, Callahan's the smallest. Um, so if that was the one to be closed and we had the Willet, Valt, Oldham, Prescott, Cleveland, so five schools to play with. Pretty sure we could have a model of two schools, three through five and three K through two. And this is just all really quickly, but I'm pretty sure if I play with these numbers, there's a way to do it. And obviously that does require a lot of shifting, but I just think if we're going to have to go through a transitional process, we're a school system, we have to consider the academics and very much tied into the academics of our children is their development and their emotional needs. So if we're going to have to shift, we need to do it in a way that is developmentally appropriate.
I like that idea, I think that's a good idea to look at, definitely.
So share, share with me your numbers.
Share with you my numbers?
Yeah, because it's after, well, your, your ideas, because it's after nine-thirty.
You may share a few later.
Yes.
Okay, good, because I'm probably having the child waiting for algebra homework. Every Wednesday, that's what I have to do, so I need to see if my math part of my brain.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, ultimately, it would be better to have multi, you know, the, maybe half this, but again, that's, I mean, people love their own neighborhood schools, but if you had K to one in one school on this side of the town, K to one, that would be a step in the right direction. It doesn't necessarily, because you're right, you have six schools, but it doesn't cut any of our overhead. If we don't cut any of our overhead, then we're back looking at the personnel piece. So that's, that's where the rub is. And again, back to my original comment, there are no good decisions here. There's nothing that's good for the kids, there's nothing that's good for the district, there's nothing that's good for long-term planning. Um, so.
Um, one point, um, off of what Teresa said, that in terms of trying to keep bus, buses low, just like you said, if you ha- if you do, you know, two K to two buildings and three, you know, three to five buildings, you could try to disperse them so that we weren't running into huge increases in bus costs.
Right.
Um, so that you, you know, you had one on each side of town or something like that. I think that, I think, so I would say, look into, just to, to keep it clear, we'll look into option four, uh, hybrid option, Callahan-Oldham or, you know, some other variation, closing one elementary school. And then I think you could amend that to be the K two, three, five model. And then, you know, I, I do think it's worth going through the whole eighth grade to high school, fifth grade to CMS, K. I mean, I think we can all agree that's a nightmare in terms of logistics, but I, I think it's worth having numbers for.
Right. Yeah, and the problem, the, the, the real tripping point is how we fit them into the high school.
Right, because it's, it'd be overcrowded by like two hundred.
We have tried to do that because technically you would want the eighth grade kind of in their own area, except for maybe science. Um, and it's how do you, that's, that's been a tripping point.
How many students are there at the high schools? I thought we were under.
We're, we're under, we're at nine hundred and, but the school's built to hold, um, ele- eleven hundred and we would have over like twelve fifty if we did that.
We're at nine ninety-one.
Yeah.
Right. So we'd be about, about a hundred kids over capacity. And the, and a lot of schools, and there was two different ideas. One was you have classrooms that people don't know if they have offices. But this, this particular building was not built, so people don't have a, an office to go to to do their prep and their work and leave a classroom, so it's, would be challenging.
Maura?
So something I'd like to kind of transition to, if you, if you would like to, is the timing of all this?
Yes.
Because no matter which way we go with this, this is going to be, you know, incredibly difficult to plan out and I would say to plan out right. Because again, if the override doesn't pass, this option is something we're going to have to be able to live with and function within for years. And, you know, the, the preschool move, you know, we had staff coming in volunteering their own time. You know, we had, it was, it was quite a, quite an undertaking and we're talking about one that's far more involved. So just to, to pivot to the timing.
Yes, so, um, as we said, the Budget Balancing Committee, um, you know, has made a recommendation for an override, um, for putting an override on the ballot, but the Budget Balancing Committee did not make an over, a, a specific recommendation for the timing of that vote. And, um, I personally am very concerned about, you know, what, what could happen depending on when the votes happen. There have been a few different ideas floated that we could have a vote April one. Um, we could have a, um, a vote in, um, potentially early June and we could have a vote late June, maybe even early July because we were talking about at least thirty-five days after town meeting ended and it's unclear, you know, town meeting tends to drag on. Um, and this year it's scheduled to start, I think, like May thirteenth or something like that. Because it's the second Monday in May is when annual town meeting starts and so that kind of pushes us later in the month anyway. So, um, I, as I was, as we've been talking about the, all of these things and budgets and, and what that's going to mean, I, I was just getting more and more nervous about the idea of a vote, particularly in late June, giving us no time to respond. And, and so, um, after Maura and I met as the Budget Subcommittee, I drafted a letter that, um, I would like the committee to consider sending to the Board of Selectmen, um, describing some of our timing constraints. Just because I think that, um, general government side of business just operates in a very different manner than we do and they have, um, they're looking at fewer cuts than we are and I think they just, they don't have a whole bunch of kids who are going to show up on, you know, that first Thursday after Labor Day and be ready for school, whether we're ready or not. So, um, I apologize that I only sent you this to you guys this afternoon, but I hope you had a chance to review it. Um, Maura, you did give me a couple of little edits and I have not incorporated them yet, but I thought, because I thought we would want to talk about them as a, as a group.
Maura?
I was wondering if either you or, if, if you're tired, I can, I think it'd be important to read it.
That would be great, if you would like to volunteer to read it, that'd be lovely.
I went to school for theater, all right. Dear Members of the Board of Selectmen, select people perhaps, as there is a woman. Uh, as members of the school committee, we recognize that each elected board has designated roles and responsibilities. As such, the Board of Selectmen has the sole authority to put questions on the ballot and to select the date for any special elections. We are writing this letter to be sure that you are aware of the schedule constraints faced by the school department as the town of Norwood considers a potential operational override. A few different options have been mentioned as possible times for an override vote. April first with the general municipal election, early June immediately after town meeting, or late June or early July allowing for decisions to be made at town meeting. Each would have advantages and disadvantages. With respect to the schools, we are concerned with staff retention, having adequate time to make budget decisions and explain these to the public who may understandably have many questions and having sufficient time for the schools and families in town to react to any necessary changes. As you know, the school committee is currently in the process of setting our budget for FY twenty, assuming that there is no override. We need to cut more than three million from our level services budget to achieve a balanced budget. Note that at the November twenty-ninth presentation by the Budget Balancing Committee, the schools outlined several improvements and restorations that we would like to make over the next five years. Our budget projections included money to purchase new curriculum, increase staffing at the high school to better meet the needs of our students, invest in personalized and project-based learning, and ensure that we have the necessary resources across the district to support our high-needs students such as English language learners and special education students. We want to be clear that none of these improvements or restorations are included in our level services budget. So we have already eliminated all of that and still need to reduce our budget by more than three million dollars. Although the school committee has not yet voted on specific cuts, it is clear that we will need to consider significant cuts to funding for extracurricular athletics, fine arts and clubs. We will consider reductions in school buses and increases in student fees. However, even if we completely eliminated extracurricular activities and only provided buses according to state requirements, we would still need to make significant cuts which will include faculty and staff layoffs. At the high school level, we may eliminate some elective offerings. At the middle school, we may need to adjust the team model, meaning staff reductions. At the elementary level, we will be discussing the possibility of closing a school. All of these cuts would have significant impacts and they would all require time to implement. An override vote on April first would give us limited time to explain the budget and answer questions, but it has a significant advantage in that it would allow the school district and families time to implement any necessary changes. If the vote is delayed to June or later, it is likely that we will lose many teachers even if an override were to pass. As soon as the school committee votes on the budget, some teachers and other staff will know that their continued employment depends on passage of an override. These teachers are likely to start looking for a new job immediately. However, February and March are not busy hiring times for schools. If we were to have a positive vote for an override on April first, it is likely that most of the teachers looking for new jobs would not yet have been offered positions and would decide to stay in Norwood. If there is no vote until June or later, even if an override were to pass, we would. If there is no vote until June or later, even if an override were to pass, we would likely have already lost teachers to other districts. The school department has legal responsibilities for when formal layoff notices must be provided to the impacted employees. We will need to notify teachers by June fifteenth. If we provide layoff notices, employees can start collecting unemployment starting July first, and can collect until they are formally rehired. Beyond the concerns about how many cuts will impact our staff, each cut that we will be considering would require time to implement. For extracurriculars, the fall athletic season starts in August, but planning for it begins months before that. If significant funding is cut, booster groups may wish to help support the teams, but they will need time to react. The annual musical at the high school is performed in September, but auditions are held in June, so scripts have to be purchased before that. All of that work could be delayed pending an override vote. The middle school and high school may need to make significant changes to their schedules if there is no override. At the high school, students are asked to select their classes for next year, starting in February. However, this year, we may not know what class offerings will be available until there is a vote. At the elementary level, closing a school and/or redistricting will be under consideration. At most of our elementary schools, students are accustomed to learning who their teacher will be for the following year on the last day of school before summer vacation. This year, students could be faced with not knowing which school they will be attending the following year. If there is a late June or early July vote, the decision would still be up in the air. If an override vote fails, and the school committee has opted to close a school or redistrict, it will take quite a bit of time to determine how best to reassign the students. Logistically, if a school must close, this is a significant undertaking. It will take time to pack and move classroom furniture and materials. Our teachers are only contracted to work until the last day of school, currently scheduled for June nineteenth. If they need to pack up to move, we would either need to start that at a few weeks before the end of school, or pay them to come in over the summer. As we stated at the beginning of this letter, we understand that it is up to the Board of Selectmen whether or not to put an override vote on the ballot. We simply ask that you consider our concerns about time constraints as you make your decision. Respectfully, the Norwood School Committee.
So, thoughts, edits, suggestions? Let me sign it. Maura?
Oh, so, just the two, go ahead, Teresa, I've already given my opinion.
No, no, I was just gonna say, thank you for doing that, because I was trying to formulate how we encourage this communication, because I wish we had joint meetings with them, so we could talk candidly to them in person, and I would still welcome that opportunity. But I think this is a really important letter, and seriously, I'll sign it right now.
Second that, I would sign it.
Maura?
I knew you had.
I just had, it's typographical items, I had mentioned just a spelling issue in the fourth paragraph.
Yep.
And I sort of adjusted it as I read it, so you could try it out and see how you felt about it.
Yep.
But at the middle school, we may need to adjust the team model, I just wanted to be clear, is because of staff layoffs. I just wanted to make sure it was clear to the Board, who might not be familiar with what we're talking about there.
I agree.
And I think that that was, those were my two, those were my two suggestions. So, with that, I would make a motion to accept, sign, and send.
Is there a second? Are you seconding Michelle, or do you, I wasn't sure if you wanted to speak to it? All right, great, is there, so, motion by Maura, second by Michelle, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, I will make these minor adjustments and forward to the Board of Selectmen so that they can have this before their meeting on the twenty-ninth.
Great. Thank you, Maya, for doing that.
All right. I think that's more than enough budget, we've been working on this for hours.
It's so much fun.
So, now we can let Dr. Thompson, superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report, yes. First thing, I did mention to the committee, and there is a memo in your packet from Mrs. Alexander, our Director of Student Services. We have a couple of students returning to the high school from out-of-district placement, which is good news. The bad news is that them coming back into the district, they'll need to be in a therapeutic class setting, and we will need to add another para to meet mandated staffing. Mandated staffing, I wanna say that again, mandated staffing. So, I don't know if you have any questions on that, but our numbers will be above the, will be above the twelve students, so the multiple of twelve.
So, does that mean that there's a savings because they're coming back?
There should be, yeah. I mean, it's kind of towards the end of the year, but yeah, we wouldn't be paying an out-of-district tuition or out-of-district.
Transportation.
Transportation, yes.
So, that's good news.
That is good news.
Teresa?
Not a question, just a comment. This is a position that we had listed our last budget cycle.
Yeah.
As a need in the district, and because we had to make budget cuts last time, we removed this. So, we're asked by many people to give projections and to state our needs, and we do. And then, through a very frustrating process, we have to chip away at those needs. But then, at some point, it does come back, and in cases of a mandated position like this, we then have to add it back in. But I know the budget process is so confusing, confusing for me, I have to constantly keep asking Dr. Thompson the same questions over and over and over again. But we do have a handle on needs and projections, and, you know, a lot of times, people might be thinking, oh, there they go adding again, but we stated a year ago that we knew this was gonna be a need.
But I also think that by allowing this to happen, we have to let this happen, but there's also the cost of the para-professional is much less than, and we're saving money, so I think that's a good thing. I think that's a great thing, and I think that that's what our school system is trying to do, is to keep our kids in our schools. So, the fact that they are coming back to our schools is another positive thing to brag about.
Yeah, well, anytime you have a student come back with their peers, you know, in their town, that's much better than being out-of-district riding a bus for an hour or more every day.
Right, it's better all around, it's better for the student, it's better for their education, and it's better for our budget. Maura?
Motion to approve the position.
And seconded by Michelle. All in favor, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, anything else in your superintendent report?
Oh, I got lots.
Okay.
I'm just kidding, I don't have lots, but I have more. The Chair also asked me to report out on grant-funded FTEs. As you are aware, the way full-time equivalence of the people that we have working in the school system has been inadequately reported in town meeting for years. We only report those that come out of the town's allotment, the town's budget, not out of other funding sources. So, I did have my business office run a report of all of those that are in grants, most of them are in Unit Fifty. But we have currently twenty point one FTEs that are paid out of grants. Two point five are paid out of revolver funds, most of those are out of the preschool revolver. So, and to give you some idea of the scope and what kinds, out of our Title One grant, we have five point four FTEs, our special education grant, nine point six FTEs, and most of these are specific service providers, such as OT and physical therapy and speech. And so, I just wanted to put that out there, so the committee had that. The other thing I wanted to share with you is also have with you the out-of-district placement report. Here, the numbers would represent student names, obviously, we can't share those with you, but the first one, May Institute, for instance, on the top line is the institution. Next to that is the, is the cost of the out-of-district placement. Where you see a number and a space below, that's a summer program and their, and their out-of-district tuition. And you can see that there are several, some of which are rather expensive, and some of which are not. There's one on here for three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And again, when we talk about circuit breaker and carryover, oftentimes, that is our net, our safety net. So, if you had a student move in from another town, let's say in August, and they had a significant out-of-district placement, we would own it. And you can see on there that some of those can go between three hundred and twenty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and these are students with significant needs, so I just wanted to share that with the committee as well. Then, with that, I want to remind the committee that our next strategic planning is this coming Tuesday at one-thirty in Room Two Nineteen at the Savage. All are welcome. I would like to give a shout-out to the civics class, the class that I got to go spend lots of time with in Washington, D.C. They'll be at the Senator Kennedy Center in Boston on Saturday, or, yeah, in Boston on Saturday, competing for the We the People competition. I'm hoping I can make it there, it would be good to see them. I want to quickly say thank you to the Oldham PTO for hosting the Supers Coffee with the Super. I had about twenty-two people come this evening, and you guys can definitely guess what the major topic was, but I want to thank the Oldham PTO, and especially Mrs. Neil Rizzo for doing that. Usually, I walk in with a box of Joe, but she was being very hospitable and helping me out, so I do appreciate it. And that is the superintendent's report, I forgot what report it was for a second.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Thompson? Okay, the next item on our agenda is policy, but we're, I would like to move to table that, would someone make that motion? Thank you, Teresa, and seconded by Dave, all in favor? Thank you, unanimous, we'll do that next meeting. Old Business Facilities Committee update, we did meet, we did have a meeting last week, and that is still moving along, and we're having another meeting on Tuesday, so I'll have more information to share than. The field trip approval, we already took care of. Town budget, MOU, Dr. Thompson has shared this draft. If anybody has questions about it or wants to talk about it, we can do that tonight, but if we aren't ready, if we wanna wait on that, that's okay too, I think.
Yeah.
Are you discussing this on Monday at BBC?
Yes, I believe so.
What's the goal in terms of that meeting?
I don't know specifically if that's on the agenda for the BBC meeting, but I think we do.
It was on the previous agenda, the meeting that was canceled, so.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it would be a lot easier to get to hard numbers if we actually had a number voted for, an override number.
Maura?
I don't have a copy.
Yeah, I.
Here. Sorry about that. That's okay.
No, that's me, I don't know why I can't count.
You just, I know, I see, it's on me. Being noted.
So, can I motion that we discuss this at the next meeting, do we have a chance to review it?
Yes, yeah, that's fine. Okay, so, Dave has a motion to table, is there a second? Thank you, Maura, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, do you wanna?
Yeah.
I just feel like we need to talk about it before we talk about it at BBC. But there is a lot in here to absorb. There is.
Yeah, I mean, it would come back to this committee.
And the only reason I was suggesting that we table it is that individually, we can all give feedback to Dr. Thompson before the BBC meeting, and so, he and Tony Mazuko have been talking about this and negotiating it, and so, so maybe that's the better way to handle it, just given that it's already late.
And it's one of those things where we're trying to, you know, make a reasonable promise about, you know, what the future would be if an override passed, but we also have to have enough room, like, for instance, you know, we had to add a para, because there was a mandated numbers piece in one of our sub-separate programs, so we can't be out of compliance.
But a memorandum of understanding is not a legally binding contract, correct?
No, and it's more between the town, schools, and the taxpayers than it is between, it's not between us and the selectmen. That is, that's between the town boards, you know, and the taxpayer and the townspeople.
But you can't be legally held to this.
No, but that's, it's a promise you're making in good faith.
Right, and I think the thought behind an MOU is that when you're asking the voters to vote to increase their taxes, you're saying, well, this is what we are planning to do with the money, and this is our plan for how to move forward, and then, you know, you're right, it's not binding, except for the fact that certainly, there are many town meeting members who will hold on to that copy of that MOU, and would be more than happy to stand up at the following town meeting if they felt we were in violation, and say, wait a minute, this isn't what you promised us, or what you said you were planning to do when we made that vote. And so, I think it's, you're right, it's not a legally binding agreement, but it is something that says in writing, this is what we're planning to do with the money, and, you know, there's some accountability with that.
So, the balanced budget meeting is when?
Monday.
Monday, so email you thoughts before Monday?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, let's move on to donations.
Yep, we have two donations, one is from Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare through Yoshif Bagul for five hundred dollars. And the second is three hundred dollars from the Callahan Retiree Group to the Callahan Library in memory of Betty Paris and Pauline Herker.
Is there a motion to accept? Thank you, Maura, is there a second? Thank you, Teresa. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Personnel, any personnel?
Nope.
Okay.
We're good.
School committee agenda, Dave, do you wanna start?
Sure, and apologies for this, I haven't had a chance to rehearse it. So, the saying is hindsight is twenty-twenty, a simple phrase that when analyzed means that we recognize that a thoughtful decision made in the past, in fact, resulted in a horrible outcome. Now knowing that the decision was a mistake, it seems super obvious how bad decision it was. If we could have a do-over, we would most certainly not make the same mistake again. Last week, we were fortunate enough to receive an unsolicited, deeply personal letter from an individual who graduated some twenty years ago from Norwood High School. This individual wrote our superintendent a letter of apology, recalling that while he was a student in Norwood, he was a troublemaker, as was I in high school. He deeply regretted his words and deeds, and I am pleased to report that nearly twenty years after he graduated, he is now enrolled in a local community college, and he is now on his way to being a professional technician. Now, here's a part of the story that breaks my heart. He graduated from a public school system without anyone recognizing he had serious mental illness, the root cause of his bad behavior. This was before Columbine, before mass shooting drills, and before, back when recognition of mental illness was not as important as it has become today. So, to Mr. S., while you wrote the letter apologizing to us, perhaps it is we who should be apologizing to you for not helping you enough when you needed us the most. Our public education system is a massive undertaking. As the world has become more competitive, it is not enough to teach students to be literate, they need to be fluent in computer languages. Basic science has evolved into classes on engineering, robotics, and computer-aided design. Drama has gone from putting on school plays to producing full-blown professional media broadcasts. We have a sacred duty to prepare our students for the rest of their lives. Nothing can prepare our students for success later in life more than the education they will receive from us now. The more we cut our educational funding, the more students like Mr. S. will fall through the cracks. Hindsight is twenty-twenty, maybe if we had the adjustment counselors twenty years ago that we have today, Mr. S. would have been diagnosed and not have his career sidetracked by two decades. We do not have enough counselors today, and this is where I didn't have a chance to finish my writing, but I want to say that if we go ahead with these educational cuts, we will potentially be creating hundreds of Mr. and Mrs. S.'s in the future, but we won't know until it's twenty years from now, and I would not want to be sitting here to get those letters coming in to say how we failed those people today in the future.
Thank you. Michelle?
Yeah, so, I'm gonna have to respond to your report. I was a teacher twenty years ago, and every teacher in this school system was as good as the teachers are today. And we did take care of our kids, and we did counsel, and we had team meetings, and we did everything we could to help our kids. So, I don't want the community to think that we did fail our children, because we did not. I was a teacher twenty years ago, and I was a babysitter, I was a guidance counselor, I was a psychiatrist. I was a psychiatrist. I was an English teacher. I was everything in all-in-one because we cared about our kids. Our kids are different today. Our kids have different needs than 20 years ago, yes, so we have to address those. However, 20 years ago, we took care of our kids, so I have to vehemently disagree with that. We have a wonderful staff today. We had a wonderful staff 20 years ago. And I can attest to that because I was one of those teachers who truly cared about kids. I think Katie Lang remembers me and probably may be able to even address what we were like then. So, kids are different today. So we have different needs. But certainly, we didn't fail our kids. That was one boy who, we don't know what happened. We, it's a terrible situation, yes, but it's a happy situation because he came out of it. But I just want to assure this community that our teachers have always, always worked. And, and you have no idea unless you're a teacher, what you do every day to care for these kids like they're your own. There, I don't think there's one teacher that I know that doesn't treat their children, their students, like their own children. And one of my own beliefs was, when I get in front of a class or I was with a child, it was always, well, what would I do if this was my child? And I can attest that every single teacher in this system was like that then and is like that now. And then, my other comment that I wanted to make is unfortunately, I read a Facebook thread and there are comments, and there's comments about one school committee member. Well, for the public, that school committee member that these people refer to is me. So in case you're wondering who it is, it is me. It was stated publicly that that school committee member wanted to abolish foreign language. And I said, did I say that? So I actually went back to the, and reviewed the last school committee meeting to make sure I didn't say that. And I never said that. I said to look at the requirements of colleges today. And so, I actually went to Harvard School, I called Harvard and asked them. And what happened in that Facebook thread was, was pretty mean and pretty unprofessional and very hurtful. Because I never said that I wanted to abolish foreign languages. And how that got to that thread, for someone to say that I said that, is, is really, really hurtful. So, what I ask people is if you have a question about what I said, I've often given out my number, I'd love to have coffee with you, I'd love to talk to you about it. You don't know me. But to say something that's false is, is dreadfully wrong. I suggested to look at the schedule. And maybe because school, colleges have changed their admissions, that maybe we don't need, parents think they need four years of a language to get into a college. I talked to admissions counselor today at Harvard and that is not the truth. It is a two-year requirement. And that's it. And if a school does not offer more, kids do not get penalized. And as a matter of fact, I wrote down what she said. She says, they look at people, the kids that take the most challenging courses. We're, we do a wonderful job with AP. We have a lot of AP. So if a student goes and takes those AP classes and are challenging classes and even honors classes, they will be looked at more seriously. It's not because they took four years. So Harvard requires two years. There's a difference between requirement and recommendation. They recommend if you'd like to look more into that because you're interested in going into that, then you take more. So I wanted to clear that up to the public so that people that read the Facebook, the Friends of Norwood Schools Facebook, understand that I am that school committee member that suggested that, but that I did say two years. I never said not to have foreign language. The other thing that Harvard told me was that based on, and it says right based on their website, you can see that it's a recommendation, in that when they get to Harvard in their first year, they take a test. And if they pass that test, they don't have to take the foreign language required for one year at Harvard. And it's only required for one year once they get there. But I just wanted to be clear that the reason why I brought up foreign language is because we're thinking about our future students, you know, bringing into engineering classes, bringing more consumer science classes. Well, how are we going to do that? How do we add that without eliminating something else? So I was trying to be proactive and saying, well, maybe we could do this over here and help the other kids over here. And that simply was my, my thought and, you know, for whoever heard that I said to abolish foreign language, I wanted to make it clear that I never did say that and I would never, ever propose that. Thank you.
Teresa?
Yeah. I hear both what Michelle's saying and, and Dave, what you were saying and we're kind of tying to what I wanted to say as well. I, I think it's so important that people in the public understand that due to open meeting law, we cannot brainstorm and communicate and ask questions between, amongst each other without having to be on TV for all of eternity. So, it, it's a very different dynamic than any that I've ever worked in. And I understand why open meeting law is there and I respect it, but I, I dislike it so much because I, I cannot truly collaborate in the way that I want to with, with my peers around this table. And as a committee, we do take open meeting law very seriously. So, you're privy and for all you who came in tonight, I mean, you're here in person and privy to some very raw and hard conversations. And I think I speak for all of us that half the questions we're asking, we don't even want to ask. We don't, we don't want to ask. We don't want to consider. So, I, I, to ask for some respect as we go through this process, I, I think is necessary. And, and I don't always agree with everyone around the table and they don't always agree with me and that's okay, but we have to work through these issues in front of the public. So I think that, that's important. I appreciate what you said, Michelle.
Thank you, Teresa.
And, and Dave, for, to your point, I wasn't hearing you blame the, the teachers specifically, but more maybe just the setup of, of the system.
I, I didn't have a chance to really summarize because I was rushed, but I wanted to kind of communicate that if we do cut teachers, we will create more problems. Not that our teachers aren't doing an excellent job or haven't done an excellent job in the past and everything we can, but if we make these cuts, more kids could fall through the cracks. That was my only point.
Yeah. I, I, I heard you say that. And that kind of goes into some of what I wanted to talk about tonight. So, last week I had mentioned that Impact Norwood was having an event on Thursday at the Cokely on mental health awareness and stigma and treatment in children. And, and I attended that and it was really well-attended. And I just want to share some statistics that are, you know, across the nation. But currently, 20% of youth in our country are diagnosed with a mental health disorder. Of the 20% who are diagnosed, they'll be diagnosed in middle school by the age of 14. We know empirically from research that the earlier you identify and the earlier you treat, it's better. Impact Norwood is an amazing coalition that some people in this room are also a part of. And they just released a PSA today that I would encourage you to look at. It's a very short PSA, but even though I'm part of the coalition and invested in the work, I still got chills watching it because, yeah, it brings all of us together. And I just, I'm going to bang my head on the wall soon if I cannot get across that, even though I'm here representing our schools because that's what I was elected to do, it's all of us together in this town. And that coalition is a beautiful example of how it can work. Because you have your police and your fire, you have your healthcare providers, you have your schools, you have youth, you have parents, you have your religious leaders, you have business. We meet once a month. Even if you don't care about the topic, come to see how the collaboration can work because it's just really, really powerful. And in that PSA today, Dr. Thompson was part of it, two of our principals were part of it, Chief Brooks was part of it, Sagalma Aubrey at the DPH were part of it. And they were saying that as a town, we have a responsibility to our youth. People criticize me when I say student, so I'm no longer going to say student. To our youth, to our children, to their families, we have a responsibility. And that is what my entire life has been about, is helping children and families. And it's really hard to sit here and a couple people were talking to me in the bathroom at break, saying it's so emotional to hear it. It's emotional for us to be here. And my husband is counting down the day that I break down on the TV. It's coming, the tears are coming, I'm telling you. But, there's a quote that I, that I just want to read and it's on my coffee cup actually with my children's pictures. It's my favorite quote. While we try to teach our children all about life, our children teach us what life is all about. So, I want to briefly segue into something that I had the privilege to do on Monday night. The Masons at Orion Lodge sponsor the Tony Awards, which is the 10 outstanding Norwood youth. And they asked me to be a presenter. So I was there on Monday night as one of the presenters. And 20 students were nominated, 17 who go to Norwood High School, the other three go to some private schools. And out of the 10 winners, eight are Norwood High School students. And I read about four of the students and then got to listen to everyone else's nominations. And the leadership and the community engagement and the kindness that these youth possess, it, it was amazing. And they all talked about what they're doing in our school. So everything that you just heard us tonight talk about cutting is why these students were nominated. Athletics. And, you know, Dave, you were talking earlier and Maya, I think you also, about what athletics teach us. You know, it's not necessarily about getting the ball in the hoop, but it develops your character and your leadership and, and so much of personality and perseverance in life. And these students are involved in our fine arts programs. And, you know, we didn't dive too much into activities tonight because I know we're reading more data, but these students who are nominated, they're in our global citizen program and our friendship club and our National Honor Society. And just selflessly giving and giving and giving. And they all said in their essays how much they believed in the town of Norwood. So, we need to believe in them. And if we believe in them, you invest in them. And we are so proud, I know we're proud as a town of what our students do because we want them in our parade. And everybody wants the Magic Bulls at their events. And we're so proud. But I'm going to challenge anybody who tells me you're proud. Because if you're proud, there's a responsibility and there's an accountability. And if you want to talk more about it, just as Michelle said, I will get coffee with you. But we have, we have to be accountable to our youth. So, thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Maura?
Uh, yeah. I just, a couple of just quick things. So to echo what, what my colleagues have said, I, I think, you know, as we talk about timelines in terms of overrides and when we're figuring out what we're doing in terms of school configuration about the elementary school, I just want to remind everyone, we're talking about kids, little kids, who, like, some of them, the only place they feel safe is at school. And we're going to disrupt that. And we might say it's going to be one thing and then it's really another. And just to echo back to what Dr. Manaday was saying, the, the students at the Oldham are talking about researching penguins and making origami jumping frogs, like that's what they should be doing, that's what they should be thinking about. That's what, like, that's it. They shouldn't be worried about, where am I going to school next year? Am I going to know? My mom and my dad or my grandparent or my guardian seems really worried about that. Why are they so worried about that? I, I don't, they're kids. And all of these cuts that we're looking at are going to impact them. And they're going to impact more than that. They're going to impact parents, they're going to impact the community at large. And one thing I also just want to point out, over here, there's a group of teachers and they're wearing t-shirts that say Team Kindergarten. And I've been looking at them all night and there's, I just keep thinking about this. And anyone in, in the town knows me. My grandfather was a custodian in these schools his entire life. He worked in buildings that aren't even buildings anymore. And I can go into, into, yo, Walter's granddaughter. Yes, I am. You know him because you went to school with him. My mother has worked in this building in the same classroom with the same yellow oven for 38 years. She had surgery and the first thing that happened when I walked in here was a plant arrangement that the rest of the staff had bought for her to say feel better. And I think it's important, I might beat you on that breaking down thing. I just think it's important that we understand and that you all understand that we know as we're talking about disrupting these schools, they're family. They're family for the students, they're family for the staff. When someone gets sick, you drop off food. And we're talking about disrupting that. And disrupting that in a way where we might say, you might not have your graduation from your elementary school because we don't know if you're coming back here. Like, it's more than just a timeline. It's more than just when is it politically convenient to put it on a ballot? These are human beings, these are kids. These are people who have worked in a building with other human beings for years. And I just think we should be respectful of that. And just know that we all are.
Thank you, Maura. For my part, for my addenda, I just wanted to mention that I was elected to this committee in, three years ago, so that means that I'm coming to the end of my term. But yesterday I filed my nomination papers and so I am going to be running for reelection. When I ran originally three years ago, I, there were a few things that I really wanted to help the schools do. We, I talked about wanting a building study. I was not the only person who was talking about wanting a building study, but I feel like we're making good progress in that. Not only did we do the building study, but we filed with the MSBA and we have made, we got through the first step there. So that's, I'm very excited about. But the other big part was that I wanted to work on the budget process. And I think that we as a committee have been working hard to improve the budget process to make it a little bit more clear, to, to stop some of the, the sky is falling and we're going to make changes and then we're going to, you know, go back on them. And we're trying to be thoughtful about that. But clearly, there's still quite a bit more work to do. And I want to advocate for an override and I want to continue in this role and be able to hopefully see this through to a point where we are in a more stable budget position. So, the next thing is I would like to ask for a motion to enter into an executive session for some contract negotiations. And so, I need to ask for a motion and we would return to public session only for the purpose of adjournment. So, motion by Teresa, seconded by Michelle. I need to poll. Maura?
Yep.
Teresa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Me. Unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone.